Good evening, let's call the meeting to order. I'll be subbing in as the Vice Mayor for the meeting this evening. John Reed unfortunately called back east to attend to a family health matter and I know that we're all going to hold out a very important thought for him this evening. Let's start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call will show that the council is down to a rump, which we will be taking up when we reconvene on March 14th. But at the meantime, the record will show that Councilmember Bragman and Councilmember Hartwell Herrera are here this evening as well as myself. On the agenda before we go forward, we're going to pull number 21, which was John Reed's Discussion of Protecting Pedestrian Rights of Way until he returns to sit in this chair next month. We're also going to pull number 19 because Pam has a conflict of interest and that would leave just Larry and I to spar over the issue. We're also going to move number 18, which deals with the model ordinance and all things waste, to just after number four because this council lives to support and help out Marin Sanitary Service and get Patty Garberino home to her husband, who I trust is watching on 27 even as we speak. I'm sure he is. And with that, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting.
So moved.
We'll show you unanimous. We move on to the announcement of closed session. We had two issues, potential cases. We met with legal counsel and gave directions. Similarly, we had a public employee performance evaluation. The council considered the matter and also gave direction to staff. We now move on to the meeting protocol, which everybody knows and is on the agenda. Moving further on this very, very busy agenda, which I can only imagine demonstrates how well our new town manager Garrett Toy has grabbed the reins and moved forward after the very successful handoff from Judy. Announcements, very quickly, the Fairfax Food Pantry remains in operation Saturdays 9 to 11 at the Fairfax Community Church. We do have a whole bunch of vacancies that would be nice to see filled, one on the volunteer board, one on the planning commission, I believe we'll be taking that up this evening. We have a vacancy on the youth commission. That also is going to come up in issue number 24 this evening and the council might have some thoughts on that. A vacancy for a youth commissioner to serve on Park and Rec. We have a vacancy on the open space committee. Focus has a sponsored clothing toy and equipment swap for families with children, if you can have one, zero to 10 years. On Saturday, March 9th, from 9 to 11 with a drop off on March 8th. And something that's always extremely important in my family, the Easter egg hunt is teed up for March 30th at 10:00 a.m. Anything else you guys want to add? Seeing none, let's jump into reports and presentations. There's nothing more important or delightful than we can give a proclamation to a fellow member and refugee from Long Island. Rudy, can you come forward?
Oh, well, thanks. And if you use our time, slow your terms down.
Well, now that we'll be reading.
I can hear you.
Oh, you will. But as we go, Rudy, the way it's going to go here in our regular matters, if we don't do, we'll be here till 2, 3 o'clock in the morning. But for your-
Time is the enemy.
But for your proclamation, I'm going to do it very, very silento, if it would. So this is a proclamation honoring Rudy. Anthony Rudy Contardi- For 25 years, quarter of a century of dedicated service to the town of Fairfax. So, whole bunch of wherethes, which I'm now going to read. Whereas Rudy Contardi started working for the town of Fairfax in the street department on March 7, 1988. And whereas Rudy is well-respected by the town council, your peers, the citizens of Fairfax, and everyone who has worked with you due to your commitment, dedication, and conscientiousness while performing your daily activities. And whereas you, by yourself, with only the able assistance of a furry feline rodent control expert, has kept the parks of Fairfax in great shape for the enjoyment of all, including your very special care of the fish and the pond that is in their home, providing a special stop on the way to the playground for every child in Fairfax. And whereas you have put your heart and soul into the maintenance of the central ball field, making it into a true Field of Dreams. For baseball fans of all ages, efforts have been rewarded by the renaming of the field as Contardi Field. And whereas you have helped open the Little League baseball season every single year on our precious gem of a field, sometimes as Elvis, sometimes with help from peanut characters, but always with a spirit of fun and enjoyment for all who attend. And whereas because of your good cheer and tip of the hat, to all who live in the magic kingdom of Fairfax, our own Mayberry is affectionately known by some as Mayor Contardi. And whereas you have gone above and beyond the call of duty to make Bellinas Park shine for the annual town party called the Fairfax Festival. And whereas you opened your home that you share with Milton, Blaze, and Shoshara to the public on Halloween and spread the magic of the holiday to children of all ages. And whereas we have heard from your contacts as far flung as Tel Aviv, Prague, from the biggest garage sale in America, from Memphis and Nashville to the greater New York area, who all agree that you are an outstanding employee and citizen of the town of Fairfax. And whereas you have survived floods, political upheaval, I don't know, more public works directors than are easily recalled or remembered, the annual farmer's markup, and has still managed to smile and make others smile while making the job look easy. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by all who know him, that Rudy Contardi be acknowledged and commended for his 25 years of dedication, commitment, and exemplary service to the town and its citizens. And be it further proclaimed, that the town of Fairfax is a much better place because Rudy Contardi chose to work here.
You've burned up from that. If you'll hear from me right now, I take pride in this town that I live in and have six more years left. And after 25 years of service, there's no other town like the one I live in right now. And the people that I work with, you especially. You, I've only just begun to name. And for those around me, I don't make a name of myself. I love my town and I will continue for six more years to provide the best service, the best looking town. And aside from all the council and this, that, and the other, I will do my best again. I love this place, I love you all. God bless, my mom and dad taught me well, and I will continue to do so. So, no further ado, I can only imagine, because I'm leaving, you guys are going to hear from here on out. God bless, see you later.
Good meeting.
Yeah, it was good. It was enjoyable. All right, Holly, try to follow that one.
Okay, do I push something?
I think it's on.
Okay. Yeah, thanks a lot.
No, no, you have to push the buttons.
Now? Okay. Well, thanks a lot for having me come and speak on behalf of the Fairfax Volunteers. We definitely appreciate getting the chance to let the council and the public know what we're up to. We have a lot of fun, which makes me scratch my head why we don't have as many applicants as some other organizations in town for our empty seat. But I'm going to make it short and sweet. I've titled my presentation, "The More Things Change, The More They Stay the Same." Our mission is and always has been to foster goodwill and community spirit in Fairfax through volunteer activities. And I was here a couple of years ago, as you may remember, highlighting a few of our projects and also honoring some specific volunteers for their service for the fuel reduction grant that the town attained in 2010. At the time, it was Chipper Day, it was a new project for us. Now we've incorporated it as one of our many. And it just, it struck me as I was looking back at my report from two years ago that a lot has changed, but a lot has stayed the same. What has remained the same, our ongoing legacy projects have, a lot of them have maintained the same. We've maintained relationships with other organizations in town, cross-pollinization, so to speak. And several of our board members have been here as well since I last was up here. So I'm just going to list through, I did have a picture show ready for you, since pictures are worth a thousand words, but so it's going to be really short. And unfortunately, I spent like three times longer on getting the photos ready than I did my speech, so sorry about that. So I'm just going to list our ongoing projects that we've been doing since I was here last, the holiday caroling and wreath making party, creek cleanup, trail marking projects, townwide picnic, Fairfax Community Garden, and Chipper Days. And new projects since I was here last, proud to say the Fairfax Food Bank, the Fairfax Song/Poetry Contest/We Don't Know What It's Going to Be This Year. We started a community Passover Seder here in the Women's Club a couple of years ago. And we have a new eventsvolunteer.com website, which has been an amazing tool to help us get people signed up. So anytime you can go on there and you can see what we have available, the Fairfax Volunteers, as well as many of the other town organizations, and you can sign up. And other things that have stayed the same, the groups that we've partnered with, we continue to partner with Sustainable Fairfax, with the Open Space Committee, with the Artists in Residences, with Park and Rec, with the Chamber of Commerce. We're actually going to be hosting our third version of a Town Mixer with all of the committees in town invited to come and socialize and give updates on what they're doing and how we can all work together. New groups that we forged relationships with have been the Fairfax Community Church and the San Francisco Marin Food Bank. And finally, board members that have withstood the test of time, myself, Anya Chandler, who's sitting here, fundraiser ambassador and idea person, thinks of things like the song contest, Merrill Roberts, who handles all things technology for us and does our email blasts and brings her super cute kids to all our events, Bruce Killen, our treasurer and trail builder, and Maria Baird, our community resources coordinator that we share with Park and Rec. We have two new board members, new since I was here before, Ted Pugh, who sits on GPIC, he's also in the audience, I saw him, there he is. And he is also researching, ongoing researching, getting the social media, nextdoor.com, it's specifically made for towns and neighborhoods. So if you know about that or want to know about that, you should talk to Ted. And Helen Foss, who is our liaison for Chipper Day and fire prevention in town. So here's where I was going to start my slideshow. So I just want to mention, super briefly, the food pantry has been amazing. We serve about 150 families every week. The community seder, we had a great response. We barely even told people about it the first year and we filled about 80 seats. The song contest was awesome. It was an evening at the Sleeping Lady. We had about 15 folks who performed songs and Tim Barrett's Hobo Band was the winner. He sings it at various community events. And so on. Anyway, sorry you're missing the pictures, but keep coming to our events and thank you a lot.
Before we move on to the next-
Do you want to say something to now?
Absolutely, Anya.
I just want to say that, well, I'll just-
That it takes people like Rudy and it, I don't want to hit a button. I just wanted to say, and Holly also, who is just omnipresent, all the time, such wonderful services coming out of the organization that she chairs. I am so, you know, lots of times when I just want to stay home, I'm there because Holly has been there three hours before me, taking care of things. And when we truly are, as you people are there also. But I think what makes Fairfax so wonderful are the people that we have that make sure things get done. And I just wanted to say thank you.
While Bruce Ackerman is teeing up for the GPIC committee, is Bruce Ackerman here? Obviously Bruce knew that we had 147 things on the agenda, so he blew us off. Before we move on to number four, the annual report from Marin San, I see sitting in the back of the room, former council member Ryan O'Neil, who was not with us and didn't give us the opportunity to thank. The council did not have the chance to thank you for your service when you resigned so sadly last month. So on behalf of all of us, Ryan, glad to see you back in the room and we already miss you. Moving on to number four, the annual report from Marin San. Steve, you can do this, Kim? Patty?
Kim?
Kim?
Every day.
Can you hear me? Thank you for having us here to talk about the annual report. I agree with Rudy, Fairfax, there is no place like Fairfax. It's a pretty special place. I hope that the council and the town manager and staff were pleased with the results from the annual report. I know Pam is thinking, man, I wish we could have done better, but we can do better and we will do better, but it was a really good accomplishment. So in the annual report, we actually did two years. We did 2011 and compared it to 2012. And the reason we did that is because we wanted the town to see the difference between the new and improved and really comprehensive 2012 contract and what a difference it made in the town's diversion numbers. So Pam, pat yourself on the back, it was a good job. Before I start, I want to give an explanation of diversion numbers and what they mean, because there's a lot of confusion between everybody, from the state all the way down, on what is a jurisdictional diversion versus a Marin sanitary recycling rate. So in a nutshell, the jurisdictional Marin County diversion rate incorporates the ton per ton recycling rate of all the haulers. It also incorporates diversion activities. So you get diversion credits for everything that you do as a town and as a county. And those are things such as, you know, printing on both sides of the paper and saving your lawn clippings on your grass, having facilities like the away station, you know, encouraging reuse, source reduction activities. So all of that is counted by the state and they give that credit to the municipality, to the county, to Marin. And that number is the 75%. Now Marin sanitary, our numbers help contribute to that 75%, but ours is only a ton per ton recycling rate. So the materials that come into our facility and then go out of our facility are what we report, and those numbers are lower. So if there are any questions on that after, we'll answer that. So the town of Fairfax went from an overall 62% diversion rate in 2011, and of that 62% that helped Marin County get to the 75%. That also included the numbers from all the other haulers that are in the county. And then all the activities that all those cities and towns participate in. In 2012, the number went to almost 65%. And that's because of all the zero waste programs that were incorporated into the contract. So some of those things were the community compost, the Chipper Days that were advertised, we actually advertised in Marin sanitary, every resident in Fairfax received information on that program. We're doing more zero waste collaboration. We've started the hazardous waste curbside program, so the residents of Fairfax can have a no-charge pickup at your doorstep of some approved hazardous waste and electronic waste. So the other things that the town was able to accomplish in 2012 was, there was a 9% decrease in, I mean a 9% increase in the migration to 20-gallon carts. So overall, there's only less than a percent, less than half a percent of the people in the town have 96-gallon. So the majority of people are using 20- and 32-gallon carts, which is a big accomplishment. You know, other accomplishments are a really big collaboration between the town and Sustainable Fairfax and Marin sanitary service. And so we're always, we're working together to move these programs forward and to continue to divert more from our landfill. So I would just like to say congratulations to the town on a great contract and for partnering with Marin sanitary to help the town move their zero waste goals forward. So with that, I said I'd keep it very brief. I'm going to let Patty come up and talk to you about some plans that we have coming forward.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you very much. We too share probably your chagrin about numbers not climbing. And one of the things that we've done around the operations, and welcome, I'm the one you get to meet with on Monday, all good, face, yeah, is that we think that the base is eroding. And the base is eroding for a number of reasons. We naturally, if you take a look, and it's kind of hard, but if you take a look at what we were climbing up in the tree, 75% base, 3% increase with residential food waste composting, for instance, and the carpet and drywall, that's 11 tons a week. We didn't really see an incremental increase in the diversion rate until we all sat down, put our heads together and realized, when we did the waste characterization study five years ago, we were hauling off four C-train containers of newsprint a day, now we're doing two. So yesterday, we commissioned the same folks that did the waste characterization study for the county of Marin that we based, the zero waste study, all of us in Marin on, to do it again, but not just on the 25% fraction, but on the overall 75%. Because if that's eroding away while we're all working hard and paying for new programs, we need to know that and find, maybe redirect our path a little bit. So newsprint was a large volume and a weighty item in the overall diversion rate. So we're looking forward to taking a look scientifically at exactly where are we and where are we going. And I have copies, actually, the same third-party, Cal Recovery, did this not only for us in the county of Marin in 2008, but they also did it in 1992 and 1991. So we're looking forward to bringing that information back to you. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, on the paper thing, I could tell you that I run my law office out of my house, and I've noticed that basically I'm moving toward digital. And, you know, the amount of newspaper that I receive is miniscu-
Right.
You know, it's so, I'm seeing that, you know, even as a graying old-timer, even, you know, even our generation or part of it is moving toward the brave new world.
It's a good thing. That source reduction, that's the only thing that's going to get us to zero waste, is actually using less.
I've heard it from Pam, I've heard that from Pam.
Yeah.
Just a few thoughts on things. First of all, and I don't think this is a Marin San thing, I think it's on us. When I was reading through the report, it notes that in the fall of '12, residential green waste routes were manually audited over a three-week period and below were the findings. And the second bullet is 43% of these carts contained evidence of food waste. This equals a 20% participation rate. Am I understanding that only 20% of the folks in Fairfax are using the green waste can to recycle or divert our food waste?
That is-
Because if that's so, we have some work to do.
We do. Unfortunately, that's also very high in the state's average of things. There's a tremendous ick factor out there, and I just want to confirm with Kim that that number is correct. People, we're getting a lot of pushback from customers, even in Fairfax, it's icky, that's why I bought my garbage disposal, and a lot of other things like, I don't want the little thing on my counter anymore, and, but it's higher than most other communities.
God, how precious are we? But I spoke to you a couple of months ago and I reported back to this council your very generous statement, which was, look, if you have a dirty can, and somehow mine always seems to be relatively really shook out, and I don't use one of those, I just dump it in the can, then, you know, it can be cleaned, it can be, or you can clean it on your own, you know. So there are options here. So for those who are in the room and listening, you know, this is an extremely important part of our diversion opportunity.
And actually, that's the carrot. The stick is probably going to be now that the legislature is finished with things like the budget, there, we're looking at, especially with AB 341, which is the mandatory commercial recycling law, we're looking, what we're hearing from our lobbyists are organics bans at the landfill. So it will be eventually becoming something, because of greenhouse gas production, that will be mandatory. So people will have to get used to doing it.
So one last thing. Also as part of our contract, and I believe it's on the 27th of April, we're going to be doing the electronic waste, but I think just as if not more important, is the pills. And the horrible habit we have of just improperly discarding those, and there are fewer and fewer drugstores who take them back. And, you know, this has to be overseen by the police because it's somewhat controlled substances and things like that. And so the shout-out this evening is for folks to take advantage of what you're paying for under the contract. And on the 27th, if I'm correct on the date, is to come down to the place that we will, I hope, very well advertise, Garrett, and make sure that folks know where it is, the hours that are there. And I just, as somebody who's tracked this for many, many years, I just don't know what single thing we could do more importantly to protect the outfall from our sewage treatment facility into San Francisco Bay. So again, a little shout-out and some burden on the town here to make sure that we fully advertise this.
The county has just put together a brochure of places where that material can be dropped off, and Renee was part of that committee meeting.
I can bring it in.
Oh, there you are, sorry. There you go. And so we're, there's not a site in Fairfax, but we had talked with Judy about the challenges that your department might have with people maybe not able to cover that day, and it does need to be a police official that collects it, so we had offered a dip-in. Okay. Lovely, lovely, great. Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Hi, I want to say thank you. I'm that person who's always pushing.
No, it's good.
It doesn't mean that I'm not really pleased with our contract, and it doesn't mean that I'm not really pleased with some of these numbers. And I think that, you know, as I'm kind of crunching the numbers here and there, one thing that did jump out to me that feels really good is we diverted 400 tons more in 2012 than we did in 2014. Now, we did have an increase of what was collected by, this is the first time we're kind of seeing these numbers, so I'm excited about. So that tells me that in the town of Fairfax, we were able to truly divert 150 tons more in a, you know, we were 150 tons of true reduction away from landfill, from our little town in one year. And considering that our contract is fresh and new and our work with Sustainable Fairfax is fresh and new, I think that that's a huge accomplishment to me. And I, my greatest hope is that we continue to make that kind of, you know, improvement on a regular basis and that we keep thinking and we keep looking for what is the next thing, where is the new diversion, and I think we're absolutely right, you know, this- And I think we're absolutely right, because, you know, this, people got to get over this thing after, and maybe it's a matter, like, a lot of people don't really get that our landfill is filling up, and it is, and we are no longer going to be able to use it in the next seven to 10 years. It's going to be done. Like, there's no more away for our stuff to go. And so I think that that education really needs to happen in order to get people to understand how critical it is. And you guys providing the resources for the away, the land correction is just been a critical partner for us. And I know that we'll be poking and pursuing and pushing every step of the way, and hopefully people have a good time doing it and really creating a model for other communities to follow. So thank you.
Absolutely. Did you have questions?
Yeah. That, the contract was a long time coming, as we know. And the thing that jumps out at me about the numbers is commercial customers diverted 77, almost 78 percent. Residential, where you'd think there's more consciousness about people with their personal habits, only 59 percent. So my question is, what are the commercial customers doing that the residential customers should be doing? How do we motivate our residential customers to do as well as our commercial customers? Because that's just a huge statistical difference to me that I find very unusual, considering we're all patting ourselves on the back about what good citizens we are here in Fairfax.
I'm going to answer that, and I'm also going to mention that Steve Rosa is here. Steve is in charge of operations, so correct me if I'm wrong. But it's also important for me to acknowledge Ron Piambo is here. He's lived in this town since he was born and has been with Marin Sanitary for 43 years. So that's very important for me. Good question. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, the commercial waste stream is more generic, so it tends to be easier to fraction up and divert. In other words, a lot of cardboard, a lot of things that are the same, so it's an easier piece. It also has less plastic in it. And more and more with our convenience-based society, you've got things in that residential stream that we simply cannot recycle because there is either no market, no technology, or we're not going to be a part of sending material like Styrofoam or the plastics to a third-world country where it becomes in somebody else's backyard.
Burned.
Or burned.
Yeah.
Without a calosha to watch out for the employees.
So are we, are apartments and multi-unit buildings included in commercial?
Yes, they are.
So are those, are the, let's just, if we could look at just the multi-unit housing, it just seems, well, I don't know. Do we have numbers on their diversion rate as opposed to just the commercial generic?
We don't have them separated out right now from multifamily, multifamily from the overall commercial category.
Are we doing recycling in multifamily?
Yes, we are.
As recycling, so they're...
We are.
Okay.
Which is also very labor-intensive.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and that's all good, it just is a high turnover population, so you have to keep it going.
Yeah, yeah. And it's hard to recycle for 20 people as opposed to four.
And get them all on board, yeah. And actually, the major hurdle is the management on-site, making sure that they're on-board and that there's the space to have the material diverted. We're actually, more than you probably want to know tonight, we're looking at some sort of single-stream systems potentially. We're taking a look around California, what they're doing. That's what they're doing internationally in order to make that space issue not a happening, and then you take it into a place and separate the material. You still have the municipal solid waste separated out, but the recycling stream is bottles, cans, and paper altogether, just doing that single stream for multifamilies because it enables a bit more and it gets away from the space issue.
And I just had one other point about this whole ick factor, which is, what I find is that if you have lawn, you know, green waste with the food waste, it's, there's no ick factor.
I know.
Because it seems to kind of smother the whole putrescent odor of food waste.
It does. It does.
So you got to mix the two. So, you know, you can't just do food waste. Food waste is going to smell bad, but if you have green waste and kind of layer it, it really makes a big difference.
It does. Friend who runs BioMarin, big time at Corporate Center in San Rafael, was complaining about the ick factor on the outside of the can. I said, are you throwing it at the can? And I'm having a trouble with my mother. So it really is something to get over, but I have the same issue. Mine is, I've never washed my can, and I'm living a happy life. But a lot of people are not yet converted. Two good-news things, we are starting July 1st with the Commercial Food Waste to Energy Project. Oh, good, so that'll be great. You'll hear more about that. We've also got our very first, hey, Ron, the hybrid truck is here. So that's very, very good. Uses, I might have mentioned it last year, 50 percent of the fuel of any of the rest of our trucks, operates actually off of the friction of braking all the time, which is what our trucks do. So even better than C and G, no fracking. So with that, I will leave you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Say hello to David.
I just wanted to add, there, our website has been revamped. We launched it last year birthday, and there are a lot of tips on there for composting at home and how to keep the smells away, how to clean your can, how to reduce in the first place, so check it out.
We will.
www.marin sanitary dot com.
All right.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you leave, we are, first of all, Garrett, remind Bruce that when we put him on the agenda to give a report, we put him on the agenda to give a report. We're going to move right to number 18, which is the discussion and consideration of the model ordinance for mandatory commercial recycling and construction and demolition debris recycling. And Garrett, you going to take this?
Yes, with staff report? Does, okay.
We're going to, we will do open time right after this.
For public comment.
Okay. So the item before you is staffs requesting direction regarding development of ordinances for mandatory commercial recycling and construction demolition debris recycling. The report's actually broken into two sections with the council's discretion. Do you want me just to talk about the mandatory commercial recycling ordinance portion first? And then you could have a discussion, and then we could talk about 12, that all cities take actions to recycle otherwise divert solid waste from disposal. These are for businesses, businesses defined as commercial or public entities that generate more than four cubic yards of, what, that solid waste per week. For multifamily units, they fall into commercial if they're five units or more, regardless of the amount of waste they generate. Our laws require local governments like ourselves to develop a commercial recycling program. These programs have impeding, monitoring, as well as business education outreach components. Programs, you have three options. One is you could address, adopt a commercial, mandatory commercial recycling policy, or you could acquire a mandatory program through a franchise agreement, or you could require all commercial waste by businesses be diverted to an operation that could actually separate recycled materials from disposal. So what we're recommending is you take a look at this model ordinance. Model ordinance actually was prepared by Marin County's Joint Powder Authority, and within this, we think it has a lot of different components, and as staff, we really need guidance on the various components. And the staff report, it lists things like sectors, garbage collection, like, you know, thresholds of what we should collect, size of businesses, like, should it be five units constitutes a commercial multifamily building, or should it be four, designated recyclables, exemptions to the rule, as well as enforcement methods. Pretty much at this time, we really don't have an estimate of what the cost of town will be. We don't know whether or not the funding we receive from the JPA would be sufficient to fund some of these different activities, so we'll have to report back on that later. And then obviously, if we do come up with something, there would be additional businesses to, additional impacted businesses to comply with the ordinance. That concludes the staff report.
Questions of the manager?
Yeah, and I think that, what, I guess, so there's sort of six main kind of areas here where you're wanting us to send you in the right direction, and I ask to move this item up so that Marin Sanitary folks are familiar as well. But this is state mandated law that's basically coming down to us, but we get to interpret it to some degree how we want, if I'm reading it correctly.
Right, you can make it more restrictive.
Right. And I know that one of the things that, my sense is that, as we've discussed, multi-unit families, wellings, are, you know, commercial sort of operations, and the challenge is often space, the challenge is getting compliance, the challenge is getting the managers of the buildings to kind of be on-board. And my sense in moving this forward is also, I think it's going to be certainly an effort upon a part of the town and maybe potentially our partners with Marin, or, you know, continuing this collaboration with Marin Sanitary and Sustainable Fairfax. What I would love to see happen, as we're going to be making this large effort, is to include in our recyclables our green waste and our organic material as part of the name base. And I know that that's one thing that's kind of not in the JPA's ordinance, but my sense is if we're going to roll it out and go talk to everybody and piss everybody off, we might as well, you know, kind of try to do it all at once. And that's kind of my input on that piece. I know that, you know, we can, I don't, I don't know, I mean, there's part of me that continues to have this question of, you know, every residence in this, every residential customer in this town has had the option of green waste and food waste recycling for the last two years, but a lot of the multi-unit complexes just haven't had that option. And so I keep kind of wondering what, you know, how is that line drawn, whether it's drawn by the hall, whether it's drawn by us, whether it's drawn by the state guidelines. To me, it feels like if you're a resident of this community, you should have, you know, that that should be, that the green waste should be part of that. And it's one of the reasons I want Marin Sanitary to be here, because I know that there are issues with how they collect green waste differently from commercial than they do. And commercial multi-unit is different from commercial, like downtown business. So that's, I know that there's a lot of kind of complexity there, and I just want to make sure that it's something that, I know you're meeting with Patty, and it's something that we're all sort of talking about. Because I also feel like, you know, the estimates are that, you know, something, somewhere on, you know, I had heard a statistic a couple of years ago, that somewhere around 40 to 60 percent of what people are putting in their landfill can is food waste that could potentially be diverted. We've made that possible for all our residences, and I'd like to make it possible for all of our residential, all of the residences in the town, because I think that that's where we're going to be really kind of moving, moving some of these numbers. And my sense is if you're creating a space for recycling, if, because there are multi-unit places that still, I think, still don't have recycling, that's why we're going to maintain the ordinance on recycling, that, you know, at that point, if they're moving things around to make space for that, I'd like, I'd love for us to kind of pull this all into one big, very controversial, fun ball of wax. And that's my, that's the only one that kind of really stands out to me. And, I mean, you know, I mean, I think we have to be, you know, I mean, we have to get creative on making recommendations of, you know, space for, you know, I know half the issue is kind of space. Maybe there's a way we can work with the away station that they'll help make little, little garbage bunkers for the multi-unit, you know, they'll kind of, we can maybe work some fun projects into it so that we're not being quite as, you know, quite as much with the stick and more with the, like, how do we creatively solve this together? Because I think that always helps people feel a little bit better, just saying.
With those gaps and perhaps others filled in and coming back to us?
Yes. I'm seeking to add green waste and food waste into what we designate as recyclable.
So you see this as a good platform or first draft, and that should come back to us?
Yeah.
Okay, Larry?
Yeah, I mean, I think the big potential to increase our diversion rates are with the multi-unit. It seems like if we could get food waste, I'm still not clear about recycling. Are we single-streaming multi-unit?
Not now, but Steve has a...
Hi, I'm Steve Rosa. As the town manager pointed out, four cubic yards per week is a threshold. However, Marin Sanitary has always offered commercial recycling to every single customer in the town. All the commercial accounts that are required to recycle do. Many that don't have to recycle do anyway. So, I mean, I verified personally that every multifamily account does have recycling and does participate. So a lot of that's already in place, has been in place prior to our great new contract, but that was in place prior to that already. So as, and as far as the multifamily, we did have the pilot. The material was extremely volatile. You are right about the material, and that's the way to go. The pilot was successful in that it showed a lot of the issues that we discussed, and some of them we won't bring up tonight, okay? But I think that that's, that's where we have to go, space-wise, and it's mainly an item for managers in buildings to, you know, monitor the situation of contamination, and then it becomes a collection issue after that.
So when you say there's recycling, does that mean there's a separate recycling receptacle at the multi-units?
Absolutely. That's correct. Every multi-unit, Marin Sanitary counts multi-units as four units or greater.
Okay.
The commercial recycling ordinance is five, we count four. Everything in the town, four units or greater, has recycling containers for paper and bottles and cans.
Okay, okay. So really, the challenge is getting the organics out of multi-unit and residential, too?
The residential, and I mentioned to Pam many times that I think that that's really an area to go to. We were saying earlier that I'd like, I personally would like to see some, some almost door-to-door type outreach in the residential.
Yeah, and I think we need to get, instead of directing people to go to your website, maybe that should be embedded in our website here, so people don't have to click twice, they click, you know, it's right here. It's a page of Fairfax's website where we're directly sort of directing people to what they need to do as town residents.
Absolutely. And as far as the multifamily, in our industry, and especially in Northern California, many people are working on that. And it's so, there's a lot of great minds trying to develop the proper collection methods for that, for that area.
So, I mean, I guess the question for me is, if we're already diverting at 77 percent of commercial, you know, do we, what can we do to make this ordinance improve that number? I mean, or how will this ordinance really improve the number? So I think that's, that's really the challenge for us right now, so.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Patty, anything else from Marin San before we open up to the rest of the public? You're good? Okay. Then on this item and the prior item, both dealing with Marin San and how we meet our obligations going towards zero waste, please come up and chat with us. Hey.
Hi. I have an idea. I think we should have neighborhood, oh, Valerie Hood, 79 Dominga Avenue, Fairfax. I would like to see us have more neighborhood chicken areas and goat areas, because I could, I mean, if you look at third-world countries, so-called, I don't think they have a big food waste problem. A, it has to do with actually using your food in a, in a way that you should be using it, and B, you feed it to animals to increase your food supply. And we're, we're sort of silly here, how we do everything, and very wasteful. So just that comment. And also, maybe the whole thing again of, maybe we need to have neighborhood parties where we actually educate people about their lawns, about spaghetti composting and things like that, because I know every time I get a new client in landscaping, that's what they're always asking me about. They really, they've heard about it, but they don't get it, and it's, it's a hands-on thing, and most people are afraid to try. And the gentle clucking of chickens and the eggs that would be produced and the goat milk and all that kind of stuff could be pretty cool, and I think those things are possibilities. I just hate to see it, I mean, when I think of diversion and recycling and stuff, I'm thinking, look at all the gas, look at all the hauling, look at all the insanity. It just adds to the utter insanity of how we do everything. We, if we're going to be local and sustainable, we need to be looking at, how do we recycle right here most of everything that we have? And I think that would take care of a lot of newspaper, a lot of cardboard, a lot of everything. I mean, we don't put that stuff out on the street because I use it all in my garden all the time. We have so very little that we put in the garbage can. I don't like to even think about garbage, it makes me sick. So I sort of try to buy everything in bulk, and I try not to buy anything in plastic. I just think it has to do with consciousness, and we have a long way to go. Thanks.
Thanks, Valerie. Barbara?
Hi, Barbara Kohler, 14 Ace Court, Fairfax. I've heard throughout the meeting that all residents in Fairfax have the opportunity to use green waste cans. I do not, and nor does anybody in my complex. I live in a townhouse community, and we don't have any green waste cans. I don't have the ick factor problems. I walk along Glen Drive and I see them, so I know that it's possible. And so I suspect that there's a possibility that for the townhouse communities that the green waste cans weren't available or weren't made available, and that would be one thing. I know many of us would use it, I certainly would. The other thing I'm wondering about, I work in San Francisco, and in San Francisco, I can recycle and throw... can recycle and throw almost anything in the green waste can. Very little goes in the garbage. There's a big delta in Fairfax to what can be recycled and what can go in the green waste cans. And I'm not an expert in this, but I'm just asking the question, it seems very different here in Fairfax, that there isn't as much that we can throw in the old recycle can or in the green waste can, and maybe that's something Marin Sanitary has already looked to, or Sustainable Fairfax, but maybe we can see what the difference is in San Francisco, and maybe there's something we can do to improve our abilities. Thanks.
Well, let's get some quick answers. Patty, you got anything on the Ace Court?
Two things, thank you. Would love to get your address, so that we can make sure that you do get the can if you don't have it, because you should.
No, it's me, it's everybody to call.
Okay, love to get your address, all good, because you should have a green can. Love to also have you take a look at a tour of our facility versus the San Francisco facility. They do perhaps take other things, they take plastic bags. Where we take our, where we operate our compost facility is actually an organic compost facility, and truth be told, San Francisco's facility starts and stops quite a bit because of contamination. So while they do take a lot more stuff, it's not necessarily very good for the environment, and I would invite you to take a tour of their place as well on Hay Road in Vacaville. So, but I'd love your address offline, and then we can make sure that you get a card. Did you call the company and ask?
I'm just, first, no, and I don't think it's really my responsibility to call the company on behalf of a complex that I don't manage, but I think what I'm pointing out is, it's probably an oversight in some of the complexes that have townhouses, and so rather, I'm happy to give you my address, but I know nobody in my complex has it, I haven't walked around to other townhouses, but I think it's something maybe you guys can evaluate, and we can just fix that. But I'm happy to give you my address.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. Michael McIntosh, I would also like to support that Fairfax reaches out to Marin Sanitary so we can have these green cans. On my property, we have approximately thirty recycle cans that we use very actively and every week. We also don't have a green recycle can, and we would love to participate in that program. So I think it comes through Fairfax, so if we could do that, that'd be great. But what I really wanted to come up is, I hope that Fairfax will continue working with Marin Sanitary, looking forward to actually use, especially with the new equipment they're putting in, fuel cells, because if we use our solid oxide fuel cells, we'll get a lot more electricity and our byproducts are a lot better. So I'm hoping we do that. And I do suggest that you also follow Patty's suggestion, because I've been through the Sunset Scavengers, I guess, I don't know what you call the location where they collect all their garbage in San Francisco? The Sunset Scavengers, where they collect all their garbage and break it apart. But I've been through Marin Sanitary as well as San Francisco, there's no comparison. You can walk through Marin Sanitary and keep your shoes pretty clean.
It's been my observation over these many years that the town and Marin San are in collaboration with one another as we move forward toward the ultimate diversion and getting towards zero waste. Holly?
Holly Bragman, Thirty Hickory. This is a small suggestion, but after we updated our kitchen with permits, we, our ability to recycle and compost and, and sort everything went way up, because the design of the kitchen is such that we have the four different, you know, things that we need. So, I mean, maybe the town, when people come in for permits to redo a kitchen, they could have sort of a suggested guideline for incorporating the design of their kitchen to enable them to do away with that ick factor, because we don't really have the ick factor sitting on our, our counter anymore. And then I want to find out how my wine bar can get in some sort of a, I don't know, composting, what would you call it, pilot program or something? It's in San Anselmo, so, yeah.
Is it the one on the corner?
Lincoln Park, it's, yeah, it's on Drake.
Oh, I'm sorry, Holly, is that the one that you opened up in the town next door? Not here in Fairfax?
Yeah, 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 we, we, we were too late to do it here. One twenty-three is already rocking, so, anyway, we would like to do that, because we all live in Fairfax, and of course, we pat ourselves on the back for, as you said, for being composters, but we, we, it kind of makes us sad to throw all this awesome food waste away, so, thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? Terrific. Seeing none, and thank you all, and thank you Marin San, thank you Patty, and again, send my best to David. We, we will move on to open time for public expression. As we all know, it's a three-minute opportunity, and we will not touch upon any issues that are otherwise on the agenda. Michael?
Hello, Mayor, thank you. First thing, if you'd please pull off your consent calendars, number nine, excuse me, number ten, eleven about the bridges, I would like to participate in those discussions.
Come up to the consent calendar, you can remind us of, of those, and we'll drill down onto what your concerns are, rather than arbitrarily pulling them off the thing now.
Okay. And then second off, I heard you earlier say that you gave direction to staff about the closed session, and as we've discussed in California law, if, if direction is given to staff or council which incurs an expense, it is incumbent on you to share with the general public upon request what those directions are, and subject to that matter for the closed session. And so I'd like you to share that, but before you say anything, if you'd please share that. I do remember also last month where you said the Fairfax way, the transparent way, and if we could honor those statements, I'd really appreciate it.
Michael? Yeah.
I do have a subject.
You're, you're as regular as, as the sunshine, but I must say that we have apprised you of the town's legal interpretation of the Brown Act. You were provided with a formal letter from our town council on that very item. I have spoken directly and legally, under our obligations and the way that municipalities operate, and there will be no further comment on this item as to what closed session was about.
Well, there were, there were two items, and so if we could share that with the general public, it's, it benefits the entire community to know what we're doing.
Michael, if you were here in the room at the time, I noted that we had a conference with legal counsel on two potential cases. We heard from staff and legal counsel, and we gave direction to both. We also had a public employee performance evaluation. We took information and we gave direction to staff. There's nothing more that you are going to hear from this council on this issue, whether you come this month, next month, or a thousand months from now. And we have given you a legal memorandum on this very point, so there's really nothing more that you're going to coax out of me.
Am I trying to coax out?
That's it.
But I will provide you, as I have, by the definition and the language of the state which I've provided to council, and when there is an expense incurred, such as a direction to council or staff, so that there is a monetary expense upon request that is supposed to be released to the public. So if you could please review that position, I'd appreciate it, because I feel it benefits the entire community when we are, as you said last month, transparent, the Fairfax way, that we share and we're open with what we're doing. And that's all I'm asking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara?
Hi, Barbara Kohler, Fourteen Ace Court. I'm here on behalf of the Open Space Committee. Our Chair, Mimi Newton, could not be here. So I'm here briefly to talk about our fundraising efforts. We're trying to acquire some beautiful open space on Upper Ridgeway, and this is open space that connects with San Anselmo's Hawthorne Canyon Open Space and the Ridge Trail System. We're looking to try to raise at least forty-five thousand dollars in the next few months, and to use Mimi's words, tell your rich friends. My words would be, anybody can donate, if you have more resources than others, please donate very freely. We have a beautiful town, we really want to preserve our open space, acquire new open space, and continue to help us live in this town that we all love and is so beautiful. So I brought a few of our flyers. I'm also going to leave a couple up with our town council members. I know one already donated. And also, so I'll pass a few out, and maybe we can pass a couple down, and... And just to let you know, you can also go to the Fairfax Open Space website, we have more flyers, and we'll be hanging out at Good Earth on various weekends, I think I saw Pam there last weekend, and going to various other places to try to get people to donate, so please do so. It's, we're really happy that we have the approval of the town to move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Valerie?
Valerie Hood, Seventy-Nine Dominga. I have a check for three hundred and seventy-five for the town of Fairfax, which is half the take of the last two films we showed. Our next film, we were really successful last, last, the last time with Symphony of the Soil, it was incredible. Our next film will be shown on Friday, March twenty-second, at seven PM. We have two short films on drones, and we'll be discussing the problem of the looming domestic use of drones and the increasing militarization of our domestic police forces. This is a dilemma now faced by our neighbors in Alameda County, where there's been recent discussion of a plan by the Alameda County Sheriff's Department to deploy up to two small lightweight drones. The Seattle Police Department last week grounded its two drones amid privacy concerns, and the Government Accountability Office warned Congress that its push for drones to become commonplace in U.S. airspace fails to take into account privacy, security, and even GPS jamming and spoofing. I'm not sure what that is. I believe this plan is on hold for the moment in Alameda County, but it is one of dozens of local law enforcement agencies nationwide to move toward the deployment of the unmanned crafts. Some of the agencies that have purchased drones to date include the Miami-Dade Police Department and the Texas Department of Public Safety. Again, our next film will be at seven PM on Friday evening, March twenty-second, here at the Women's Club. On another note, I just wanted to say I'm shaken and saddened by the death of Hugo Chavez, President of Venezuela, who died yesterday after struggling with cancer. I'd like to quote a bit of what Lisa Sullivan, the Latin American liaison of the School of Americas Watch, a place in the United States where Latin Americans are taught the evil arts of torture, had to say at his passing. When Chavez first announced his cancer almost two years ago, he referred to a song by our beloved singer-songwriter Ali Primera, who also died too young. In English, "There are cherry trees on the hillside and a lovely song to sing. So much beauty around us, so much to do." That echoes in my heart. I do believe this is Chavez's true mandate, this is continuing what she said. Embrace your passion and then share it with others. If you can play the guitar, teach a kid to strum. If you love basketball, shoot hoops with a teen. If you can fix a bike, teach the skill to an unemployed friend. If you have oil, share it with those who can't afford their heating oil in Maine. If you have doctors, send them there where there are none. As he did, celebrate your beauty, your history, your dignity, and honor those qualities of others, as family, as neighbors, as nations, as global citizens. Today in Venezuela, our sadness is deeper than Lake Titicaca, colder than Patagonia, larger than the Amazonia, and harsher than the Adacama. But we also know that together as Venezuelans, as Americans, and Carabeneos, we are invincible. That is Chavez's legacy. And I always like to remember, the stench of sulfur was in this room.
Thank you, Valerie. Mark?
It's Dominga Avenue night. Mark Bell, sixty-three Dominga. And my issue is about Dominga, where it meets Napa, and the beautiful new street sign there that designates fifteen miles per hour for a right-hand turn onto Napa. I don't really know why there is a street sign there, it should be pretty obvious, if you go straight, you're going to run into a concrete barricade in front of the alley. But, you know, be that as it may, I think people are now traveling faster, because they go, oh, fifteen miles an hour, that means I can probably do twenty-five in my... So I think it's defeating the purpose of safety. I think if you're going to have a sign there, it should probably say ten or five miles per hour, because I don't see it solving any problems, but I see it creating new ones. Thank you.
Manager, you'll take a look at this and get back to us on this?
It's also really not that pretty, frankly.
All right, before we move on to interviews and appointments, I just want to take a moment, I should have done it at the very beginning, to welcome our newest employee, Michelle Gardner, as our deputy city clerk. As you know, and as we know, your husband serves on our Affordable Housing Committee, but I did notice that your daughter is how old now, in ten, eleven? Senior? Great, thanks for making me feel even older. But I do notice that we do have a position as a youth commissioner, and I was just kind of thinking we could get the trifecta of your family in here, if you could convince her. One more after her? Okay, good. And welcome to Fairfax. Moving on to interviews and appointments, we have interview and appointment of three candidates for the Planning Commission for a full four-year term to February twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, to replace Peter Lacks, who served with great dignity and, and hard work for many, many years, and we thank him very much for the service. If those three candidates, which I assume are here, could come forward, that would be terrific. You would be Jonathan.
I'm Peter Hedieris.
There you go. It was, it was one out of two, and I...
Jonathan's here.
Jonathan's here, too. Fantastic. Roxanne's here.
I think you need to tell...
Yeah, come on up, all three of you, please. No, just the two of you? Okay, let me suggest something at the very beginning, and I think this is, is more for Roxanne applied for this, for this position over and over and over again, for a number of years, and, and when we interviewed her over these many times, not only was she the smartest egg in the, in the, she was smarter than anybody, certainly sitting up on council. What, what I would like to know is your thoughts on this, which is, before we, we do the formal interview, how you would feel about the fact that people come, people go, over time. We do have lots of other openings, we have an opening on the Open Space Committee, for example, that I listed before. I, I'm wondering if, you know, it's, it's always awkward, you, you've applied, we're incredibly grateful for the application, and I'm, I'm just wondering how you feel about, if I may be so bold as to say, you know, taking a little bit of a, of a second chair and allowing the council to appoint someone that has, they have interviewed on a number of occasions and has found to have extraordinary qualifications, and then to bring you back, probably not all that long from now, when some other member of the Planning Commission leaves, or to ask you to join us and, and your hard work and ethic and effort in one of our other committees.
Oh, well, I hadn't really thought about it. I read an article in the Ross Valley Reporter about the opening, and that nobody had applied. And I, and my, my law practice is real estate, where I deal with, you know, construction issues and code compliance issues, and I had a little bit of experience dealing with a planning commission in San Francisco, so I thought I'd make a decent planning commissioner, so I applied. And, you know, I, I certainly thought that, that there would be other applicants, and there are probably plenty of people in town, including Roxanne, who would do a fine job. I don't, I don't think that I, you know, could be better at than, than a lot of people in this town. I, I don't really know much about the open, open space committee. One of the things, one of the reasons why I applied is that, you know, my family's lived in, in Fairfax now for two and a half years, and during that time, a couple of issues have come up, the, the proposed music venue on Sir Francis Drake and so forth. And, and I, I think that, my view is, I'm, I'm not really an anti-development person, but there's practical limitations here. The town is served from the east by two two-lane roads that are overcrowded, and I, I really feel that, that the town in that context is fully developed. That I, I don't, and I think that, you know, that's, you know, we live on, on Taylor Drive, which is right near downtown, and thank you for fixing our sidewalk, I appreciate it. And so, you know, we hear a lot of the traffic noise, which is what we, and we knew that, you know, when we, you know, rented the house, we knew we were going to hear the traffic noise a block from downtown, but we hear it. And I drive to and from San Francisco occasionally, and, and last week, when there was a, apparently some kind of accident on Sir Francis Drake and Lansdale Boulevard at the same time, it took me forty... me 45 minutes to come back from San Iselmo. And so, I, you know, I feel very strongly that if there's ever any kind of major project going on, that it should be a real uphill battle until... Unless somebody comes up with an idea to alleviate the traffic problems. And that was one of the reasons why I kind of, I was interested in this position. I don't know very much about the Open Space Committee. My wife would be excellent with the Open Space Committee. She's, you know, she's very into hiking and biking and all that kind of things.
Do you have any kids? Because we have them.
We have... Well, yeah, we do, but he's only 10, so he's got... I think the youth commission was 14 to 19, I think, so he's only 10, so...
Well, I guess my question to you is...
You don't need my permission to appoint her, by the way.
No, no, I get that. But you can find myself falling over myself here and trying to ingratiate myself so that we can bring your application back at the next opening. That would be my personal view. I can't speak for the council.
That's fine. That's fine.
That's just my take.
May I chime in? Depending on what your decision is tonight, there may be an opening on the Affordable Housing Committee.
I thought about that. However, when one reads the Affordable Housing Resolution, it's very tightly drawn to bring in expertise on affordable housing, thus, Michelle's husband and Roxanne. So it's not as democratic, shall we say.
Could I make just a comment? I mean, it sounds to me like Peter's thought long and hard about not only this, but the whole field of real estate. And I certainly think you're qualified to serve on the Affordable Housing Committee because a lot of that is getting financing to do the construction. So if the Planning Commission doesn't happen, I really hope that you'll consider that because it's a good entree into what the development patterns are, what we're looking at as far as development, big development, et cetera. So, good point.
If it's in consensus, then, of the council, we would ask you then to perhaps apply for the Affordable Housing Position that would now be vacated by Roxanne's joining the Planning Commission.
I'd be willing to think about it, sure. I don't know that much about that issue. I spent most of my...
I can give you a stack of...
I spent most of my law practice in San Francisco. We only moved out in three years, and in San Francisco, affordable housing has always been a really, you know, a really big issue. I've done... I do some public interest work in this area. I represent 210 organizations and public housing projects as a kind of a semi... It's mostly pro bono. They pay me like, you know, a small amount of money out of pride, mostly. But, so I've, you know, that's an important issue, too.
So let me suggest. Think it over. Please bring us back an application for our April meeting, just coming up in a couple of weeks. If you really don't feel that that's what you want to do, then let's hold your name for our next opening on the Planning Commission, and we'll go in that direction because you're certainly well qualified to serve on our Planning Commission.
All right, thank you.
And we thank you for your application.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Hey Roxanne, we don't get to reject you again. Are there questions for the fourth or fifth time of Roxanne on this?
I think we've heard of you plenty.
Yeah. Well, with that, I will entertain a motion to appoint Roxanne to our Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? I, unanimous, thank you Roxanne.
No votes.
And thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to council reports and comments. Larry?
Not too much to report. I went to the... It was a demonstration against the XL Pipeline. That was about the only public event I attended last month because both Holly and I got sick on Super Bowl Sunday. And still think it's a big issue for the town of Fairfax. Generational justice is at stake if this project is approved by the President. You know, I mean, I'm more convinced than ever, if anybody's going to write one letter to their congressman or their senator this year, do it about XL because that's a decision that can be made... That's the President's decision. And it's a huge decision that if it goes the wrong way, it's really going to be mortgaging our kids' future to carbon and a lot more difficulty. So it's a big decision, and, you know, this is going to keep coming back to Fairfax. And so, that's my pitch this month, is that each of us, all of us that are listening to this, get active because the decision is going to be made in the next few months. So, that's about it.
I had a meeting with our new manager and I'm enjoying watching your InteNo Fairfax. I know you're doing a great job. I also, we have been kind of excited with the meeting with you and Sustainable Fairfax since I was down on zero waste. I attended the MCCMC, where the delightful Nona Dennis gave an incredible history of which David attended as well. Incredible history of Marin's environmental meetings and some of the battles that have been fought and some of the extraordinary foundations that those of us who fight, continue to fight for these things stand up. And it was a delight to have her give that talk in front of the rest of Marin County's neighbors and council members. And I also, we had a chief's low meeting the other night, and we... The chief's low committee has received a collaborative grant, and the grant is for $4,500, and it's for us to share with the Slow Food Marin organization to put on a dinner and a party. And all of this is sort of like coming up in a year, as well as we want to be curators for our program called Less Economy Sustainability, which is primarily around food and sustainability. A lot of the chief's low impact is very, you know, the food area, and particularly for this year, we've got a little bit of funding takes when these interesting projects happen. We'll be doing these collaborations with Slow Food and certainly for a small new committee sort of reaching out for other collaborations as well.
As Pam says, I attended the MCCMC dinner, and Nona Dennis somehow managed to recover from her opening line, "You never want to be at a dinner event," but somebody says, "Beginning in 1952." And then moving on. But she did track the challenges being presented by the legislature this year and some misguided folks with regard to CEQA, and a number of bills are moving forward on that. The departure of Senator Rubio from the inner part of the state to Chevron was, of course, quite welcome because he was a leading force, even though he's a Democrat, toward the potential dismantling or crippling of the important CEQA statute. I also attended the monthly MCCMC Ledge Committee, and despite the request from the governor that perhaps the legislators put a bit of a break on their proclivity for initiating new legislation, over 2,000 bills have been entered into the hopper, and I will be able to report back on the ones that the League of California Cities will be pressing forward or recommending that the legislature not move forward on. And finally, I also had an introductory meeting with our new town manager, Garrett, and I just have to note that I gave him a memo of just some five things that I would like to work on in the near term with him, and stunningly, the first one is number 23 on tonight's agenda, this question of moving forward on preferences for local businesses. Garrett, I stunned that you have hit the ground running this hard and this effectively, and thank you. With that, we will move forward to the Town Manager's Report.
Well, actually, I do have a couple of things. First of all, thanks to the council. First of all, in the dais, you should have some supplemental information on Farmer's Market. One is a larger version of that matrix, so you could actually maybe read it. That might be helpful. The other thing, thanks for introducing Michelle, our new Deputy Town Clerk, Fairfax resident and lawyer by training. And then, since we're speaking about town clerks, you will notice that our Town Clerk, interim Town Manager, Assistant to Town Manager, HR Manager, and anything else we can think of, is not here this evening, and that's Judy Anderson. Judy, I don't think likes that fanfare or receive accolades when it comes to all her work, working for the town, but I need to, for the record, personally state, she's been very helpful in the transition, she's been very helpful for me. I think she's a valuable town resource, and she's really going to be missed at a staff level. I think she's going to be missed by the town. And so I just wanted to put that out for Judy, if she's watching this, which I would hope she's not watching it, if she's not here. And with that, I think that's all I have to report.
We'll move on to the Consent Calendar. Michael, what were the ones you wanted? Nine and 10?
Ten and 11.
Ten and 11.
Ten and 11 on the... Could you come forward and tell us what your concerns are, and perhaps we can address these without getting into the weeds?
Thank you very much, Michael McIntosh. My concerns are for 10 and 11, if we can make it part of the public process with discussion, I'd very much like to have the community engaged with any discussions about contracts being awarded, engineering being awarded, which bridges we're looking at within the Ross Valley or Fairfax community, which bridges you feel might be compromised, and where we're looking at expenses to replace or repair those bridges. I honestly have a vested interest in the subject, and I brought forth to you a proposal when I offered to give you my bridge for free so that we could take advantage of the 105% funds.
We're on the consent calendar.
This is for the consent. I explained why I want it pulled off the consent calendar as opposed to drilling down to little issues so we could discuss the whole thing so that the community is aware of it. Thank you.
What is the council's pleasure on 10 and 11?
I would like to see him pulled.
Okay, we will pull 10 and 11. Let's... You know, we do have folks here on... I don't want to keep them here all night, on this creek restoration and the methodology for the impact study on the gas station. Let's put it at the top of the regular agenda before 18. We'll put it at the end of the public hearing and before the regular agenda. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else have items on the consent calendar they would like us to address?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
One, on number nine, approval of the contract with Coastland for the Bike Spine. My question is whether we put out an RFP to see if there's anybody else in the Bay Area that would consider helping us?
Well, actually, that would have been better answered by Judy, but my understanding is we selected the firm just based on their work on different aspects of the town and thought they could probably do the best job given the task at hand.
Well, I don't know if we're on a timeline or not. It's not that big a contract. It's about a $27,000 contract, but based on my experience with the work they did on past story, I mean, I just don't think it should be automatic. I think the process should be open to see if there's anybody else available. And the other question I had was on past story, on the certificate of completion, there's about a $3,500 change order, and that's supposed to be approved, and I'm curious what the change order was. Does anybody know?
You know, what we can do, if you like, we could just continue these items to the 14th and get back to you with more answers.
That would be...
How's that?
That would be great.
That'd probably work better.
I would really appreciate that.
You put it to address on the other?
Yes. On the 14th. It'll be continued to our next meeting.
Pam, do you have anything?
Nope.
Well, on number 13, earlier today, I spoke with the manager. And what we spoke about, I would like everybody's thoughts on this, is when you come to the end of the project, sort of a few feet after the support pole...
Right.
It's as if, and I hate when government does this because private industry would never do this, that we just came to the end, and there's another 15 feet, and then it slightly wraps around the road, and the Good Earth is doing some extraordinary plantings, and actually, this project was pretty darn good. What I had suggested to the manager is that he come back with a suggestion, perhaps some permeable pavers or something else to continue the beautification of that part of the street. But I'm thinking if we put in plantings there, it's going to get pretty beaten up. It's a tough corner for bicyclists and for pedestrians. There's... It's been sitting sort of naked ground for a while. There's a plastic pipe that sits on top of it that's purple, and it's been going on and on and on. So I recommended that to the manager that perhaps at very low cost, he could come back and make a recommendation, how he could beautify just that little corner there and unify it. The Good Earth has done some nice plantings, and we've done some nice plantings to finish the work rather than just leave it as a little scar.
And the other thing, that would be a separate project, though. That's separate. And the other thing is the crosswalk across center that gets to the new sidewalk is very problematic. So there's an ADA ramp or an attempt at an ADA ramp on the south side, on the Farron Elm side. And we actually surveyed that area, Mark Lockaby and I did, with another contractor to try to fix it, but it just seems like if we were going to build this beautifully landscaped sidewalk, that people should be able to get there if they need to use a wheelchair, scooter, or some other kind of device. And the other thing on that project is where that guy wire comes down from the support pole on past story, we... I don't know if we've talked to AT&amp;T or whomever, but there's another little horizontal support that should be put in place so people don't hit their heads when they walk on the sidewalk. So I'd like to see that addressed, too.
But other than that, it was a very successful and...
You got a lot of critics in a small town.
All right. I want to move on to the public hearings, unless there's other further comment.
Consent calendar?
That's it. Yes, let's take a vote on the consent calendar, with the exception of number 10 and 11. Do we have approval of the consent?
And nine and 13.
And you continued two items, too.
Yeah, I continued them, too, after the public hearing.
No, we continued...
And we continued nine.
Nine and 13 to another week.
To next week.
To next week.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
All right. Public hearings, number 16 on the agenda. Adoption of Resolution 13-9, approving the methodology for a traffic impact study to be prepared for use of the gas station at 2001 SFD Boulevard as a gas station convenience store. Planning Director.
Okay, this is in regards to the old Fairfax gas station, 2001 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And to just sort of encapsulate what we're doing here tonight, the town code requires that you all approve the methodology in a traffic impact study when one is required in order to get a traffic impact permit. We received an application in October that will require a use permit, design review, and a traffic impact permit because of the amount of new trips that are generated. It is an application for a convenience store and a Chevron gas station at that site. I would call your attention to the fact that in our staff report, under discussion, we've brought up to the property, we've brought up to you all, that we're paying close attention to the easement of the extension of Bank Street, and in the letter that our senior planner, Linda Neal, wrote to the applicant, that was also articulated. And lastly, if you look at Mr. Prezi of Prezi and Associates, who is our peer reviewer, in his letter approving the methodology represented by W. Trans on this study, he also asked for a little further study about circulation of pedestrians around the site also, and this is dovetailing with the idea of how would you accommodate your interest in having this business operate if, in fact, the town was to claim that easement. Lastly, after the traffic impact analysis is performed, it will be grouped with the other items that will go up to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission will have a public hearing, and then if, in fact, they find the use permit, they find positively towards the use permit, per town code, the last step is this comes back to you again to approve the results of the traffic impact study, the methodology of which you're being asked to approve tonight, and put your stamp of approval in granting the traffic impact permit. So Mr. Prezi is here tonight. I'm not sure if the applicant is here tonight or not, but Mr. Prezi, our peer reviewer from Prezi and Associates, who does this on a regular basis for the town and was our brain trust for the traffic analysis and the general plan, is here to speak to any of issues you may have on this also. So tonight, we are strictly asking you to review the methodology on the traffic impact analysis, and we'll be back to you presumably at the end of the run.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Does the methodology, and maybe David can address this, does the methodology include studying, opening up a driveway going out to Broadway so that you'd actually be able to enter from Bank Street across Broadway into the property? to enter from Bank Street across Broadway into the property? That's one question. The other question is, when we did the bicycle and pedestrian plan, the B-PAC plan, that little stretch of Broadway was a very problematic stretch because there's no sidewalk on the north side. So I would, my second question is whether the traffic plan methodology includes studying pedestrian and bicycle use and safety.
Good evening, council. My name is David Prezi, traffic engineer. The, I think the first question that you asked was about a driveway in the vicinity of Bank Street?
Right, so it would be, it would be on the south side of the property. It would be on the, on the banks, on the, yeah, be on the Broadway side of it.
I'm sure that's something that could be added if it's, I'm not sure if that's the location where the applicant is thinking about putting a driveway, but that's something that possibly could be added. Right, Jim?
If I could speak to that, at the top of my head, I do not believe that was part of their project. Perhaps going there this way tonight. The problem is, we don't have a done deal with opening up Bank Street at this point. So where we're, where our thinking is, is we need to address what their application is asking for. And so we didn't attempt to layer on an analysis that would include the extension of Bank Street through their property because that is not, you have not decided definitively that that is going to happen at this point. It is, it is on the radar. It's part of the general plan, town center element that calls for a town center plan. That was also one typo in Linda's letter. It was not a town center plan, it's a town center element. So it goes beyond what the applicant is asking for if we were to analyze Bank Street going through.
You know, just clarification, I'm not talking about having Bank Street go through the property. I'm just talking about opening up that side of the property so that people, instead of having to enter by Drake, can enter off Broadway. And as far as I know, we have an easement, and the only reason that easement is shut is because we gave them an encroachment permit. I don't know if that encroachment permit runs with the land. I doubt if it does. So I think when we're looking at this project, we've got to look at, are we going to renew this encroachment permit or not? Because as far as I know, it doesn't automatically vest in the transferee. So I mean, I think we really need to be looking at protecting that right of way. And at least to the extent of studying whether it can be opened up and what that's going to do on the circulation, not for, as a public thoroughfare, but maybe for customers, instead of them having to scoot out and get into that horrible little intersection where the light is, whether they can just scoot out on Broadway.
We, you know, going to the planning commission with that in mind, your having made that statement, is something staff could include in the report as a recommendation. We can also go back to the applicant and ask them if they would be willing to consider it, but I would defer to Mr. Karpik as to whether or not we have the wherewithal tonight to include that in the traffic impact analysis since it's not, at this point, part of the applicant's intention.
I think that you could. I mean, this is a study that the town is approving pursuant its role in the code, so if there's something that you want studied about the project that would require them to change their project, you can require it to be studied, yes.
So again, I'm not looking to put a street through their lot. I'm just looking to see, can we put a driveway there so there's egress to the back street? How that affects traffic? And then the second thing is that, is, my second question is pedestrian, how are we going to handle pedestrians?
Yeah, on the first one on Bank, I'm just wondering if it possibly could be looked at as an alternative potential consideration. And then, yes, we requested that the study also look at bicycle and pedestrian circulation along the entire periphery of the site, as well as within the site to whatever degree that would, that would make sense, particularly, you know, people walking to and from the cars. We also asked that the study consider loading and unloading and gas trucks coming in and deliveries as well.
Yeah. And the other thing, I don't think there's a sidewalk on that side of the street on the back of that lot. And that's something I'd like you to take a look at or at least consider so that we could get some pedestrian, an extension of pedestrian right of way on the, on the back because that lot is adjacent to M&amp;G. You've got a lot of kids going, going that way. And I'd like to see us, if we could, create a safe pedestrian path on the back of the lot.
Okay.
So that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Can you recall, in the back of the bank there, not Bank of America, but First Federal, is there a sidewalk on the...
I, there's, there is a little section of sidewalk, but you can't get there from the intersection of...
Right.
Right, right at that corner where the gas station is. So it's truncated or it's, you know, and what I'd like to see is whether we could put a pedestrian walkway there to connect that up and, you know, as well as the driveway to open up the back of the thing so you wouldn't have all the traffic going back out onto Drake.
The plan is for them, this is going to be sort of a combined convenience store slash gas station, too. So I tend to agree. I think pedestrian access is going to be a critical issue to look at in this, considering pedestrian traffic, then yes.
Okay. With that in mind, any public, David, any further thoughts?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Public comment?
Tony, you just sent for us, Harris Fairfax. As it is right now and the way this looks is you're jockeying in position to put a street through there, and it may not look like it on the surface, but you guys are doing all the right steps to make it look like you're doing the right thing to get the spacking of the people or doing whatever reasons you have, whether it's, you know, pedestrians or whatever, you're using every single possible reason to justify to do this LC Bank project. And I think it's wrong, and I think that you're manipulating and you're adjusting things to get it to work without the consent of the public totally. And the thing is, you may have your little meetings that we may meet at the G-PAC, but it's, it doesn't represent all of us. And I just think that what's going on here is the intent to put Bank Street through to Sir Francis Drake and to somehow work a deal with the property owners there to get it to happen.
Let me put this another way for you, Tony. Okay. Let me put it to you another way, which is that when a town has a legal interest to one degree or another, okay?
Am I being talked to so I can consent with you after this, or what?
Sure.
What I'm suggesting to you is, first of all, you have no idea what I'm thinking. I have no idea what they're thinking. I can tell you that, as far as I'm concerned, I've had no discussions with any of my fellow council members now or any in the past about this project. I can, however, tell you that when a town, a municipality, a government has a legal right, we have an obligation, we have an obligation as the guardian of that right to make sure, particularly when you have a transfer of the property, a new project coming on, there are so many interesting things with regard to the site, underground storage tanks, potential pollution, and on and on and on, that we protect our right, that we identify it, and that we protect it. As for any project which takes this easement, which we have but is in flux as to what exactly we have, because we don't even know how big it is, that is part of this process, anything that comes forward, as I said last time and as in the minutes, will be fully and entirely discussed like all land use decisions of this council and your town. There is no sleuth, there's no off-booking it to G-PAC to do in the dead of night when nobody's looking. Decisions like this, let alone all decisions, as you can tell from just the very discussion that Larry and I were having about a couple of plantings on a little corner of a street, you can imagine when we get to something as significant as a potential easement, that's the kind of discussion that will be had fully and comprehensively over time with this community. We got to this last time in this memo thing that went out and scared half the bejesus out of people and resulted in your council and staff wasting many, too many hours on it. So I can tell you, and I can promise you, that on something like this, or even a hundredth of its size, fully and totally vetted with the community.
Mr. Weinsdorf, I like your rhetoric, and I like your political discussion there, but if you follow the path of things and you see where the course of things are going, you read between the lines, you can see what's going on. Okay? Thank you.
Jim, a brief moment.
We, the town owns the easement, and we know where it is, and that's why we've asked the applicant to put it on the plans. And it is the most secure type of easement transference that is there, and it was recorded and it's part of the public record. We own it, it's there, we know where it is, we're asking that plan, for contingency, that the town so chooses any...
That it, that they are aware of it.
And to do anything less would be an abrogation of our legal responsibilities.
Could I just say something, Tony? I mean, what I'm talking about is putting in a driveway so that people can get out that way. I'm not talking about, you know, separate, making a street through that property. But, you know, I do agree with David that it is a public right of way, and the public, you know, should be able to use it to the extent that it's safe and it's an improvement for the traffic flow. So that, that is where I'm coming from on this.
They're averaging 100%, but that isn't wide enough to take on all that's going to go on there.
That is a, that's a separate question that we're not even considering now, so...
Well, let's end this conversation now. If and when it ever occurs, we'll have that full and frank conversation. Barbara?
Yeah, Barbara Coler for TNEC Court. Given that that area is a real ingress and egress point, I look forward to seeing the results of the traffic impact study. I do think the suggestions put forth by Councilmember Bragman are appropriate to look at a driveway on the back side because otherwise, we're going to have everybody going on Sir Francis Drake, going through that little area, and it'll increase traffic impacts in that area and more potential for accidents. Additionally, having a little walkway behind there will really be safe, safer for the kids and everybody in that area who can also access the convenience store should the project be approved. Thank you.
Could I just add one thing? David, when you're looking at it, I mean, to me, the priority really, given that we're protecting the right of way, is almost doing the pedestrian connectivity. So if, if the driveway conflicts with that, you know, we're going to have to make a choice or the planning commission's going to have to make a choice. And, you know, your study may determine that, you know, the driveway creates more congestion on the back side than it prevents on the front side. So I'm just saying, I think it should be within the scope of the study. And I would leave it to you as an expert to, to make the findings and let us know.
I think from the, what we hear tonight, Planning Commissioner Moore, Planning Manager Moore, myself, will provide some feedback back to the applicant. I won't be doing the study. I'll be reviewing the study. The, I see that the applicant's traffic engineer here tonight, so if you have any questions for her, maybe you can address those as well, just to make it very clear to the peer.
Okay, okay. Okay, but I mean, I think that pedestrian connectivity on that sidewalk is really important. Thanks a lot.
Peter?
I had some reservations about the idea of putting a driveway on Bank Street for the gas station, and the reason is, is that if you have driveways on both Sir Francis Drake and, and on Broadway, eastbound traffic on Sir Francis Drake will cut through the gas station to avoid the light, and that'll create a hazard for pedestrians on the sidewalk. It's illegal to do that, but that doesn't mean people aren't going to do it. And so I think under the circumstances, it may not be such a hot idea. In a lot of places where gas stations are on corners, it's not that much of a problem because you don't have, you know, you're not cutting like totally across the block, but that's such a short block there, and you'd be cutting completely across the block, and the light there can be long sometimes. And so I think that might, that might be a problem. I wish, I would hope that'll be addressed in the study. Thank you.
Certainly will. Thank you. You know, just getting a little jump there on your planning commission work, that's pretty impressive. Mark?
Mark Bell, 63 Domingo. God, it seems to be my night for street signs. The one thing that there is going to be a driveway there, unfortunately, you probably are going to need to put a stop at that corner because right now, there's a stop when you're coming from the hardware store to downtown, there's a stop, is that LC? And then the other side has no stop, and so that if you also have to deal with people coming out of the gas station...
Might be too much.
Might be too much, and already, we've seen too many stop signs because we have too many traffic lights. Hi, Polly.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Mark. Any other public comment on number 16?
Good evening. My name is Dayleen Whitlock. I'm with W. Trans, and we're the ones who will actually be preparing the traffic study. So I just really wanted to come up and introduce myself and see if you had any other questions for me. I obviously hear the concerns that you and the citizens have, and we'll make sure that those issues are, are addressed in the traffic study.
That's great.
Any questions? See, not any? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good person.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Arise Solfi. I'm the applicant. I have grown up in Marin County, in the Bay Area, in Marin. My family and my kids attended Santa Minico, so I'm very familiar with Santa Salmo, Fairfax, and I have quite a few stations in Marin County, so I have worked with cities of Mill Valley and San, City of San Rafael in Nevada and the county of Marin. So I am very eager, interested in working with the city of Fairfax of reviving this site. Was that, when I was a kid, I used to ride my bicycle and buy my candy bars, and we used to bring our cars here to get fixed, it was the auto bay. So I'm very excited to work with the city of Fairfax and eager to take on any suggestions or comments to revive this site.
Are you, are you a man of great patience?
Absolutely.
Because in the town of Fairfax, things move at their own rather unique pace.
I'm very aware of that, so, yes. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
And with that, we'll close number 16 and move to number 17, the adoption of, oh, we have to adopt the resolution. Can I have a motion to adopt a resolution?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a recommendation? We do not have to change the resolution, but I would recommend...
Hit the mic.
Can you turn off? I would recommend that on page two of the W. Trans study, where it says, "Based on this review, the following study areas suggested," there are six points, I would add a seventh point, driveway from Broadway via town easement.
And then also sidewalk.
And sidewalk along Broadway.
Yes, yeah.
And... Thank you.
Yeah, please.
And the bicycle piece is in there.
Yeah, it's in the Prezi letter.
With that recommended change, can I have a motion to adopt Resolution 13-9?
Thanks. I would so move it.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Now we move on to adoption of Resolution 13-10, our resolution approving the initial study and adopting the mitigated NAG deck for the Fair and Selms Creek Restoration Project. Jim, you're teed up on this one as well.
Okay. This is your review of the initial study, the draft mitigated NAG deck to repair the portion of the creek bank between the post office and the building at the other side of the parking lot there on the side of Fair and Selms Plaza that faces the creek. It's in dire need of repair. It's a very onerous process to get to where we are tonight. It has been fully vetted by outside agencies. It has been fully vetted by the planning commission. We have the applicant here tonight, the managing partner of Fair and Selms, Rich Hall. We have his very able planning, a project manager, Rich Dowd, who has put together this very thorough, organized briefing book, which I thank you for profusely, Rich. We also have the engineer, Mr. Michael Watkins, who designed a project that is the least intrusive way of securing that bank, not impacting the creek bed, we're moving very little earth around, you're basing... You're basically shot-creeking the bank and putting these spiral tiebacks in. It's a very eloquent design they've come up with. Our project, sorry, our contract planner, Mr. Sean Kennings of L A K and Associates, who raced up here after an item in Tiburon this, this evening, and is doing double duty in two towns tonight, he's here. He's written the staff report. He's the brain trust behind all the studies, if you have any questions to burrow in with. I do want to, just before you ask Sean any relative questions, I want to correct, for the record, a couple of typos. In the staff report, it did mention the hours of construction correctly, from Monday through Friday, eight to five, and on Saturdays, from nine to five. For the record, I just want to correct typos. We, after the planning commission, we did try to correct a couple of typos. The draft minutes, erroneously referred to the construction from nine to five, that's incorrect. That'll be corrected when we have our planning commission meeting coming up. In the initial study, it erroneously, on page two of the initial study, at the top, it correctly refers to the right hours, and then under A, construction interim requirements, it refers to seven to four. That is incorrect. That'll be redacted and changed to eight to five. In the initial study body, under noise section, the mitigation measure erroneously refers to eight to five, Monday through Saturday. That's incorrect. Saturday would be nine to five. That will be redacted and changed. And then finally, we did get it right in the mitigation monitoring plan. So with those corrections in the record, you have a very thoroughly vetted sequa document before you. And I want to thank the planning commission just 13 days ago for so thoroughly going through this. We have such a brain trust with these people, and Roxanne's going to be just the next person. And thanks to Commissioner Kohler for her fine review and making this even tighter yet. Without that, Sean Kennings is here to answer any questions, as is the project team.
First of all, I was the aggravator on those hours, so I just want to make sure of one thing. When we say other things are going to be happening between eight and five, the trucks arriving at, in Fairfax at eight, or are they arriving beforehand and everybody's going to work at eight?
Trucks arrive, trucks arrive at eight.
Okay. Because part of this is not part. This is an August-September project. People are going to be on vacation, we're doing Saturday work and, and the like. I have a few questions, but let me defer. Guys have questions to this?
You know, the one, there's a couple of concerns or issues I just wanted to get clarification on. We have a erosion problem downstream by the Pastory Bridge. And I saw, you know, so I'm concerned as far as replacing the existing natural terrain with the shot creek, whether that will speed up, you know, water speeds and the current to where it's going to affect that downstream property. So I saw in the project, excuse me, specs where they, they've textured the shot creek. Has an engineer or hydrologist actually calculated water speed and slowing the water speed?
The, the applicant's engineer and project manager here, they can probably answer those questions more specifically, but the, the purpose, the, the design of this bank is, is to do just that, is to reduce bank erosion and sedimentation, so to create a more natural slope of the bank. If...
What I'm talking about is the downstream.
No, I understand that. You're worried about flows.
The downstream, past the project.
I'd, I'd have to refer to them, to the engineer, but the, the purpose of it for the, there's a, a willow matting that goes on, on the upslope section, and then, and then below, underneath the building, it's a, it's keyed into the bank to reduce sort of that, that further erosion process.
Right.
But I would refer to, to Michael Watkins.
And then, second question, and maybe you can answer it, is I saw that there's going to be a gate put in to, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm wondering, why the gate? Why are we, are we going to be restricting pedestrian access to the creek with the gate? Why a gate?
I'm not sure what you're referring to, a gate.
There's a gate on the plans.
I, I don't think there's any limit access to the creek.
I doubt, I would let the applicant to respond to that.
On page, on C3. So I'm, I'm just wondering, in the upper left-hand corner, guardrail with 36-inch-wide gate furnished with latch for lock.
Councilman Bregman, the applicant could probably speak to that. Right now, if I'm reading the area you're talking about, that's a steep drop-off where people have been going down a very dangerous location, but they, they should speak to it.
Okay, okay. Maybe, maybe we could just hear from the applicant and just get some of these issues taken care of.
Hello, I'm Michael Watkins, Ballard and Watkins. I'm the engineer that put together this project. There's a retaining wall in the area adjacent to the parking lot, and we put in a guardrail fence to protect that retaining wall from people falling over from the parking lot side. And in order to provide access through that, that fence, we provided a gate. The building codes require, you know, that you provide some protection for the public from, you know, falling off the edge of things. So, we thought it was good engineering design to provide that protection. We also discussed this whole issue with the agencies whenever we initiated the project. We had a number of meetings with the agencies, and they discouraged providing access to the creek. And so, this is not part of that discouragement, it's more protection, but we did provide a gate so that, you know, it will be accessible for people if they need to get through.
Not if it's locked.
That would be up to the building, the, the building owner. If, if they need to get through that gate, it's accessible there through the gate. So, I don't know the, I don't know what to tell you about the lock. We can, we can definitely modify that.
Okay.
The other issue is, you were concerned about speeding up the, uh, speed through the section of the creek. That's been addressed. We did hydraulic calculations. You know, I think the fact that we're contouring the, the shot creek will definitely help the situation. I think in the best interest of the community downstream, you know, to minimize the erosion on this creek bed will certainly be to the advantage of the downstream property owners.
So, so by your calculation, the project will, will slow the water speed?
No, what, what we're trying to do is maintain the current flow. You know, we're contouring the bank, we're contouring the concrete so that we maintain the flow. We're not going to change the flow through this section of the creek.
And you've done the calculations to confirm that?
That's correct. Yep. We have, we have modeling. Part of the package includes the hydraulic modeling of this section of the creek.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. And we did do thorough study with all the agencies. The Corps of Engineers, the Armory Corps of Engineers reviewed everything. So we've had a lot of expertise that's looked at the project, and so we're just trying to do the best thing for the town.
I hear you. It's just, we, we've got, that whole area is a little bit sensitive right now, so...
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was kind of looking at some of the, the, you know, less insignificant with the need to mitigation on liquefaction, as well as some of the cultural resources. And I think that my, my, what I can see in here, and I will admit I did not get all the way through this entire thing, page by page, that were all procedures that we will follow, I know there have been sensitive sites for Native American middens and remains found nearby. I'm assuming we're, you know, based on what I read in here, we're following all possible procedures on that. And I guess I was curious, I didn't get to the point of looking at the sort of, how to deal with the liquefaction risks that are involved.
This similar thing with what Michael just talked about for the, for the hydraulic analysis for the stream itself, they did, they've done extensive studies with, with the helical piers. It's, it's replacing a failed wall.
Right.
And so the helical piers are, they're, they're specific type of technology that drills into the thing. They have tieback rods that are grounded into the hillside, the whole purpose of which is to prevent these kind of things, liquefaction, landslides, erosion.
And is there a way to, to sort of mitigate that while the project is in, while the project is happening? I'm assuming that's sort of digging and the drilling...
The, the way the project is proposed, the, the construction duration, the time of year, all these things are taken into consideration. So low flows in the creek, it's the drier season, you know, they, they've done their extensive analysis, it's in the packet. If you have specific questions to sort of the engineering, again, I would go back to Michael.
I actually did have the opportunity to kill all of Sunday reading your voluminous pack. Thank you for that. And it is extraordinarily well-prepared. And I was looking for a theme that you were driving, and I think that my colleagues have touched upon it. Larry is concerned about the flow of water and the transmission of sediment downstream that could impact downstream owners. Pam is, is concerned with some of the ancillary stuff about liquefaction and also the, the collapsing of, of this area. And I, I think both of them touch on the central point. If this project is not approved, if this project does not go forward, a couple of extraordinarily bad things will occur. These buildings will fall down, and you want to talk about a flooding danger. As the person who sits on Flood Zone 9, that will be the mother of all flooding issues. Your building is in, because of prior owners, in a hellaciously stupid place, almost as, they must have hired the same idiot who put Town Hall over the creek. Because we, we are situated in a point right now in which that bank is heavily eroded, it has to be protected, this building must be shored up. It's not a question of aesthetics, it's not a question of, of any other factor, but the fact that it has to be done, and it has to be done extraordinarily correctly. The, the rains that we saw in December, I would suggest the ferocity of them were more of a, what we can expect, rather than a one-off or one-in-a-hundred-year sort of thing. We came within a hair's breadth, as, as Larry notes, because we were standing out there looking at those floodwaters ready to crest over the bank. So, these type of in-bank protective measures have to be put into place. And anybody who's looked at the color photographs that you attached to this thing can see that the, the bank is well beyond the point of, of imminent failure. So, with that, I would ask if, if any members of the public would like to address this issue? Rich?
Rich Dowd, project manager. One thing I just wanted to add is, the intent we have in terms of schedule is if we can get the project underway in Ju, on July, it's our preference. But that's really going to be contingent upon what the water flow is that time of year. So we're in the process right now, looking ahead to that as a start point. The sooner we can get in, the sooner we can get out and avoid getting into the rainy seasons in the fall.
I'm actually glad that you mentioned that, because also, within the body of this thing, at least once, maybe twice, I saw that there was some slop over time into October as a potential. So, to actually hear you talking about July, August, with time in September is better. Again, the fish being the prominent protective.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Tony?
Tony, you just said before, is here at Fairfax. Well, I grew up in that creek down there, and I found, you know, Indian bowls and Indian artifacts, and I have a little concern that there may be some of that there. I know there were some under good earth, and I know there were some in the excavation that went on, the erosion underneath the buildings here in Selms. So, you know, I would really like to, you know, put that in the picture, too.
And in fact, you should take a look at the document, because there is an entire tab which deals with that very issue, and the extraordinary measures that the applicant is going through to make sure that they do studies beforehand, and should they discover something while they're in the process of the project, how they will address this. Also, correspondence from, from various Native American organizations, the ones that would be attendant to this issue. So they have wrapped themselves around this issue appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Michael?
Michael McIntosh. One, I like rich and rich, and I'm actually glad to see that the council is making actually an effort, in my point of view, to work forward on a project and discover what can be learned if we work together and get something done. With that said, I think Larry's comments are actually very valid, and when you shot creek something, you can also make back eddies that does slow the water down. Something that, as a town for this project and every other project you look at, is the reflective value. When you're talking about the lococation factor, it's actually the sediment load when a bank breaks down that then keeps going down the stream. And where a lot of that occurs is not really at your construction site, because you armor it. It's actually where the water, just like when you play pool and you hit a bank, it bounces across from the armoring to hit another area. So, when we look at a project, especially the town, you don't want to look at just like a bank, you want to look at the entire incorporated area. When I brought to the town the $2 million grant to restore the creek, that actually looked at a reflective value from Town Hall all the way down to Landstale Station, so you could actually see the reflective value of where the armoring was and where the change of sediment load would move. So again, I encourage you to look at not just one side of a bank, but both sides, because there is that reflective value. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, my question for Mr. Watkins would be, you know, in, in doing your hydrology study, did you look at both sides? Did you look at the, the totality and the...
You have to look at the entire reach. We looked at the entire reach, both upstream and downstream as well. And, you know, basically, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to maintain the creek in the manner in which it is, exists, you know? And we're doing it in probably the least intrusive manner that we can. We're not drilling any holes, you know, we're using helical piers, which are basically a big screw that turns into the ground, you know? So, we're not moving a lot of dirt. And then the shot creek is a, yeah, a very easy application, and we're going to contour it, so it matches the, the rock in the area that already exists.
Right. And I, I guess what I'm just looking for is, is assurance that the hydrology studies were holistic. You weren't just looking at one side of the creek, you're looking at the, the entire stretch of the creek.
You look at, you look at, you look at both, both sides. You look, when you do a hydrology study, you look at the cross-section of the creek. So it takes into account, you know, the full width of the creek, the full section of the creek. And then we did an extensive hydrology study up and down the creek.
Okay.
So I'm very confident that there is going to be minimal impact on the adjacent properties. I used to be the town engineer in the town of Fairfax for a number of years, and, you know, I've always been very concerned about this issue. So when I had an opportunity to design my project, I made sure that we addressed that concern.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that comment, Richard?
Just want to add one more item that really hasn't been discussed. And one of the things also being done as part of the project is to take the flow coming off from the parking areas and giving it much better control, putting it into a bioswale, and really slowing down the flow from all that surface area. And I think that's a very positive thing that's going to, again, really help the life of the creek. So, just want to make that known.
With that, I'll bring it back to council and ask for a motion on Resolution number 13-10. You have a unanimous vote. And with that, let's, for the pleasure of the council, take 10 minutes, and we'll come back and deal with number 10 and 11. Okay, um, if, if the council will permit, I would like to move number 20 up to like right now, because that's the one on the farmer's market, and all these folks are here, and as fascinated as I'm sure they are on Fairfax's bridge issues, they would like to make it home before the cock crows. So, with that, let's move on to number 20. Garrett?
So, the item before you, we're actually recommending that you consider proposals and select an operator for the Fairfax certified farmer market, and you authorize a town national manager to negotiate, prepare, and execute an agreement with the selected operator. Permitted parameters approved by you this evening. Um, as a little background, in Jan, is it Jan? I think it's background in February, we actually found out that the Agriculture Institute of Marin would no longer be able to operate the market due to financial concerns. In response to that, we quickly issued an RFP. Due to the shortness of time, we really only gave the proposals two weeks to respond in order to make it to this meeting. So as a result, we haven't had a lot of time to do a lot of analysis on the proposals, but you have received four, as listed in the supplemental materials. What we have done is, at the council's pleasure, we have asked the applicants to be prepared to make a five-minute presentation, and they reserve five minutes for question and answers. Also in front of you, we also gave you a matrix in expanded form, trying to compare all the proposals in order for you to have a better idea of what you're looking at. As a caveat, we did not have any time to ask any questions or get clarification, so that's our best guess. If we left something blank, it just meant, may not mean that they couldn't provide the service, which may mean we just couldn't find that in the proposal, sticking to the, to the matrix. So with that, I'd like to, just whatever, at council's pleasure, if they'd like to peer their presentations, we were just proposed to just go in alphabetical order, as listed in the staff report.
That'd be great. Why don't you call them up as, I guess, across the... Why don't you call them up as, I guess, across the chart?
Great. So I'm assuming all four are here. And so the first one's the Agricultural Community Events Farmer's Market.
Good evening. I'm Kelly from Agricultural Community Events Farmer's Markets. We run actually four markets now in Marin, in Marin-Sonoma County. We run Marinwood, Glen Allen in Sonoma County, which is a seasonal market, Paloma Eastside Farmer's Market, which Marinwood and Paloma Eastside are both year-round. And we just, we'll be starting this year, taking over Novato Farmer's Market. So we were alerted by one of the farmers from the Fairfax, long-term farmer at the Fairfax Farmer's Market, a Laguna farm, that there would no longer be a continuation of Agricultural Institute of Marin continuing the market. So we alert, you know, we contacted actually Larry Bragman, and so what do we do? He didn't know anything about it, so he waited for confirmation. So we were excited when the RFP came out, so that we could participate. We have spoken to previous vendors. I myself was a previous vendor. I've been a soap maker and a lotion maker for 15 years, prior to being an organizer. I had been a vendor at the market when it was at the theater, and then when it moved over into the park. So also one of our team members is James Fenton, who helped with the market early on when it was at the park, as well as the theater. We have a really great team, who's really excited about Farmer's Markets. They all have a vendor background, so we really focus on community, not only the community that exists, that comes to join the Farmer's Market and enjoy it, the community that exists within the Farmer's Market. And we understand that when you have a family of vendors together, that are really dependent on making their living this way. We proposed to actually lower the fees for the vendors, so that it can be more successful for them. And we would be interested, although it's not included in our proposal, we'd be interested in extending the market, possibly moving the market in the winter months, looking to bring some new life to the market with a new face. We offer family atmosphere, free kid activities. We, at our other markets, we make lavender sachets for Mother's Day, or sometimes we'll have carnivals where we do, you know, little temporary tattoos for the kids, they love that. We've done dime toss, you know, the old-fashioned 1970s dime toss with the dishes, and it gets really fun and just really simple, you know, bringing sort of that Mayberry lifestyle back that we've all lost. So I guess to sum it off, we'd be really happy to come to Fairfax and continue what has been a long-term, really great place for the town members of Fairfax to enjoy.
Would it be the council's pleasure to ask questions individually now, or wait until the end?
Wait until the end and just listen to the presentations.
Then thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Garrett, who's up next?
Oh, sorry. I think we're in meeting part of the session. Good evening. Good evening, council. For those of you who don't know who I am, my name is James Baum, and I operate Marin Community Farm Stands in CSA. I wanted to take a moment to thank the council for consideration regarding my proposal for operation, management, and marketing of the Fairfax Wednesday Certified Market. As you may know, Marin Community Farm Stands currently operates in the towns of Ross, San Salmo, San Geronimo, and Woodacre. Marin Community Farm Stands, MCFS, is an aggregator, and we create food hubs through our farm stands in Marin County. How many of you already know about aggregation through agriculture, is the question I have? For those who don't, I just wanted to take a moment to further develop this point in the minutes to come. What this means is that we represent all the farmers. In fact, currently over 31 local organic farmers, producers, and artisans from the communities of Belinas, Point Reyes, Inverness, Nacasio, Tamalas, Lagunitis, and San Salmo. Many under one, and there are many advantages. As I detailed in my proposal, one advantage in particular is the carbon footprint, a lower-carbon footprint. Instead of having 20 trucks come in from distances up to 100, 200 miles, unloading and loading and parking, Marin Community Farm Stands is able to aggregate their produce through a couple of trucks, one in particular. It's the aggregation element that makes for a sustainable marketplace in communities that organizations have had difficulty creating a sustainable budget for their operations. It's sustainable for the farmer and sustainable for the farm stand aggregation. We help offset costs for farmers, gas, wear and tear, and time. And most importantly, one of the advantages that I particularly enjoy is giving the farmers back to their land. Not every farmer is excellent at marketing their products, but the majority are excellent at producing products. MCFS also has the ability to continue to operate the market and maintain the complex diversity, the community of the community marketplace, by working with local artisans and local music from around Marin County and local businesses. And then just to sum it up, MCFS recognizes the importance of keeping money local, and those concepts resonate with the farm stands. So the fair buck is, would be an honor to be able to accept fair bucks and keep Fairfax money local and in turn back to our farmers. And one last detail was, it did come across my desk, but I have a printout of over 20 letters of recommendation that come from my customers here in our towns, and I'm not sure who else to pass them to, but...
To the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Lynn Bagley, this is Julian Bagley, and we operate the Marin Community Farmer's Market Association. It's about 15 years old, and we have five markets in Marin, and I'm also the founder of the Marin Farmer's Market in, at the Civic Center and the association from 1983, for, I was executive director for 15 years, and established the market, grew the market, and we achieved top 10 in the nation while under my leadership from the New York Times and Bon Appetit and numerous other magazines. And during that time, I also offered educational programs on sustainability and food, and also served on various sustainable and environmental committees and boards, such as Green Belt Alliance, and Committee for Sustainable Agriculture, and Sustainable Ag Working Group. And it's all in the proposal, all the different boards I've served on, so I'm very familiar with green causes, which the proposal asked me to be. And we try to orient the market towards sustainable farmers, organic farmers, local farmers, local foods, and also to educate our vendors on offering more organic products. We plan to have a seamless transition, so that all of the vendors and producers that you've had in the past can be included and can hold their same locations within the market, so the customers can find them and so their sales don't drop. But we also propose, if there's room, to add some more local and organic farmers. And then we plan to have a major advertising and promotion campaign, spending about $10,000 to highlight the organic products and the high-quality products offered at the market. And then our promotion plan would include a lot of educational programs, such as green cooking, and kids' cooking, and kids' gardening, and that type of thing throughout the season, which would be enhanced by any advertising. And then we, also because we have neighboring markets, we can include both markets in a mailing campaign, and that would cover every resident, every household from here to Sausalito, so that Fairfax would still be listed on the back of the postcard with all the other markets. It's in the proposal. So those are some of the ideas. And I just want to thank your staff, because they've just been wonderful. And I've worked with about 20 different cities and/or entities, sometimes shopping centers, in the last 30 years of operating markets. And you guys are the friendliest and the nicest. And you answer the phone, and like, kind of like in the old days. So thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Good evening. Am I good? Good evening. My name is Monique Anderson, and I'm with Next Generation Events. I'm really excited and grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight, and hopefully work on your Farmer's Market. Next Generation Events is a small, local, woman-owned company operated by Shayla Moran and myself. We have a combined 12 years' experience managing Farmer's Markets. Between the two of us, we have managed the downtown San Rafael Farmer's Market, the Sunday Civic Center Farmer's Market, the Thursday Civic Center Farmer's Market, the Novato and Fairfax Farmer's Markets. We are very hard-working, passionate women who pride ourselves on our communication and problem-solving skills. I've always been a huge fan of the Fairfax Farmer's Market. I enjoy bringing my 10, 5, and 4-year-old down to all the different markets, but Fairfax is a special one. I love the community feel, the tall redwood trees, people of all ages coming together to enjoy some fresh fruit and some local cookies from Fat Angel. I am dedicated to ensuring that the traditions of the Fairfax Farmer's Market continue with community spirit and devotion to local, sustainable food and farms. Our goal for market operations is to provide the Fairfax community with a market that celebrates the unique aspects of life in Fairfax. We are eager to promote and include local businesses. We will forge a close working relationship with affected city services, such as police and public works. We plan to implement a comprehensive green waste management program and work closely with Sustainable Fairfax, Conservation Corps North Bay, and Marin Sanitary. We will also research the feasibility of an organized composting program. Our goal is to make the Fairfax Farmer's Market reflect the character of Fairfax. While we hope to be the operators of the market, the true ownership rests with the community. Next Generation Events wants very much to operate the Fairfax Market. We have a great affinity for the character and values of the town of Fairfax, and want nothing more than to continue to ensure the tradition of the market. I'm confident that we will produce a Farmer's Market that all of Fairfax can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, perhaps it would be best for the council to ask questions of any of the applicants, and after we're done with that, we'll open it up for public comment. Do you want to take a run?
Sure. What wealth of rich, my goodness. I think that we were all really nervous to have AIM drop out of our market, and I think there was sort of a mild panic that went across the town of Fairfax of like, we can't not have a Farmer's Market! And we know that, we know that the time was short, and I really appreciate, I think you're all wonderful candidates, and the fact that you guys were able to kind of come to, pull together a proposal so quickly, and understand what we're, a lot of what we're looking for in Fairfax. I just want to thank every single one of you for kind of stepping up and making sure that we don't lose having a Farmer's Market this summer, because I know that the town would be in an uproar if that were to happen. So thank you all for coming together, and a number of you have said nice things about our staff, which is always good to hear. I guess part of the question is, I know one of the issues that AIM was having was financial feasibility of this market. And I know from having a sort of a long history of being at the market in a nonprofit setting, that a lot of the challenges are around parking, and a lot of the challenges are around sort of actually, kind of, you know, we want to create a community atmosphere. But you also, you know, I know the complaint of AIM was that it was a dinner market, not a Farmer's Market, and that a lot of people would park close by, you know, come in, sort of blanket and post up there for three hours, taking a valuable parking space away from somebody who wants to come in and actually buy produce. So I'd like to hear kind of some responses on how people feel like they could make this a, at least break even, though some of you guys are, some of you are nonprofits, some of you have a corporate model. But I'm curious to kind of get that response from people. And I, you know, I think it's going to be a really hard choice for us, and it's too bad that there's three of us, and I don't, and there's part of me that is not sure that this is a decision that I feel entirely ready to make tonight. I know there are a lot of references on here. We have, I haven't had a lot of time to kind of, I've actually heard really good things about each and every one of you, people that I know and respect and care about, so that makes the decision even more, even more challenging. So I guess I'd like to hear kind of your thoughts on, you know, making a really financially stable market, and kind of dealing with that, with that dinner market atmosphere that we like, but also to be challenging for truly addressing the needs of farmers. And I like, I really appreciate that piece of addressing the needs of farmers.
But before you do that, why don't, Pam's raised that issue. Larry, some thoughts?
Just a couple. I mean, it really is, for me, an honor and a privilege to be interviewing you, because your collective experience and what you represent is just so incredibly sort of central to the character of Marin County now, of becoming sort of a food mecca and really creating local, supporting local agriculture. And I think that's just such an important project for us as an example for the rest of the state and the rest of the country. And I really do agree with Pam. It's pretty tough, kind of making a decision and sitting in judgment about it, because you're all doing great work. I was very, I'm very concerned about making it a viable market for the vendors. I, you know, the problem we're facing now, or if you want, the decision that we're forced to make now is because the last management just couldn't make, didn't think it was financially viable for them to continue. I don't know if the vendors felt the same way, other than, you know, what Pam was saying about some of the criticism, which I think is valid. But I would like to hear, I mean, we heard a little bit of it from Kelly about the vendor community and supporting the vendor community, as well as the greater market community in So I would like to hear a little more from each of you about that. Another thing I'm curious about is, I know there's a license or something like that from the state certifying organizations as Farmer's Markets or not Farmer's Markets. And I know if you don't have that certificate, then the town of Fairfax is going to have to get that certificate and then sort of have you operate under it. So I'd like to know about your credentials in that regard. There's, some of the proposals have asked for fee waivers from the town, others haven't. Yeah, there's kind of a lot of territory to cover, really, tonight, but those are kind of my areas. And the other thing I'd like to hear from you is what the town can do to help the operation. So if you have ideas. One of the things I'm thinking about as I was listening to Pam is, maybe we should restrict parking to 30 minutes along Belinas Road during the market, so that people don't just camp out there.
Actually, I propose that. You're exactly right, and Pam's right to point it out.
parking to 30 minutes along Bolinas Road during, during the market so that people don't just camp out there.
Actually, I propose that. You're exactly right. Pam's right to point it out. I was thinking the entire, along the famous Elsie Road, to take those slatted parking spots and turn them all into 20-minute or 30-minute slots so folks can get out to the, and have to depart.
Or at least, at least some of them, so that we've got some turnover for the vendors.
Let me ask Garrett, if I can. Do you have a, timing-wise, what if we, and I share the thought of, this is a little compressed. We're now with our other council member, John Reed, who is very interested in this topic. Is there a problem kicking this after we've heard and discussed to the 14th, a mere week?
For a staff perspective, I think that's fine. I think just the issue was whether or not there's enough time for the holders to, once you snipe them, to go in and vendors' court.
Well, it would be a week, it would be a week from tomorrow that would make the decision.
So it would seem that that would be a case, that's, I guess, an important question.
Maybe, yeah, maybe that's another.
That's a question for them to decide. I guess, you know, to share with both of you, when I was a young council member, this was one of the first opportunities I had with other members of the Planning Commission and others in the community to move the farmers' market from its blacktop horror off to, off to the park and talk about inadvertently or overtly making a decision that has become a jewel in the jewel of our town and something that's so beloved. As much as it's difficult for us to pick one of you, you hold a very important obligation here because this is one of the central unifying events weekly of our entire town. And to see the kids run around and partake of this is one of the great joys of everything that's going on. So we have a burden to choose one of you, but you have a tremendous burden to do a very good job at this. So with that, might I suggest, in the same order that you got up before, perhaps you could join us again for a few moments and respond to the questions that both Pam and Larry brought up. And also, the one that Garrett is raising about, you know, would there be a problem if we made our decision a week from tomorrow night?
Is it on? So the, Pam, if you could just quickly reiterate what you were asking, so.
I think I've, 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 I've narrowed it down to fiscal viability, dealing with the sort of dinner market challenge of balancing that sort of community desire for a community to have a space, but also a desire for the farmers to be sustainable.
Right.
And then there is question about licensing and how the town can help, and then does it make a difference.
Okay. So viability, we have low overhead, we're a pretty grassroots group. Our passion lies in farmers' markets and helping vendors make a viable income. Coming from a vendor background, I understand that wholeheartedly. It can be very difficult. There are some very passionate farmers who have come to this market for a very long time. Graham, actually, from Laguna. If you don't know him by name, he's the Englishman with the little pretty produce and a very passionate about his produce and, and who he spends his time with. He will not do another evening market. You'll read his letter of recommendation. And, you know, he, he was really concerned about this possibly going away. He was thinking of just setting up somewhere on Sir Francis Drake so he could make it work. And, you know, God love him for that. There are other vendors like him that would like to come back. I do see, because I have that background of being a vendor, and my business was not viable once it went to the park. I left vending Fairfax prior to becoming an organizer. So I couldn't survive with the dinner component. But the dinner people, that doesn't mean there's not other markets for what I sell. And I have continued vending, so, you know, and that doesn't mean there's not another soap maker out there that meets the demand for Fairfax. It was, just wasn't me. So, but I do, there have been a lot of debates on this, on do we extend it? We run two year-round markets. Year-round markets are great. There are ways to extend it and still have it in the park and then switch it. There's some great locations on Sir Francis Drake, over by Fairfax Market. It's just working with those businesses and seeing whether or not they would be interested in bringing us over and housing us. But creating our vision and something that's passionate to me is seeing, seeing unused or underused pieces of property and making them more used within the community. The park is used a lot, and then there's the old, although I heard recently that it might be, somebody might be moving in, but the old automotive place next to Old Good Earth has been open for a long time. And that's how Marin would came to be. It was an underused piece of property that the community really needed this to turn around. So there are, and then Larry and David's idea of changing the times is also a great idea, to have a better turnover. Because parking has been an issue, it has been an issue as a vendor as well. Like, where do I park after I've offloaded? So I've addressed a couple of the questions, and I've already forgotten the additional licensing. So we're a mutual benefit nonprofit, California nonprofit. So the law states to obtain the certified farmers' market permit, you need to be a California nonprofit, a government entity or agency, or a farmer. So we can obtain the permit, no problem.
Next week?
Next week, that would be fine. I, you know, we're, I have, Pedalum Eastside Farmers Market was conceived five weeks before it came to be. So we have worked under tight deadlines, and that market's very highly desired, well-attended. We just had our six-month anniversary yesterday. We range, on average, just under 50 vendors, but by summer, we'll be booming. So, yeah, I don't know. I, I work really good under pressure. So it might be, it might be good. So, did I cover it all? Okay. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Seeing your concern about creating a sustainable, you know, budget for operation, you know, with the other organizations that are promoting for bid, typically, the way that the budget is balanced is by selling booth fees. And impact on the community is definitely a concern, ongoing of parking of trucks. By, you know, my, my operation, Marin Community Farm Stands balances its budget by actually moving product, produce through farmers. So we're confident that we can balance our budget because we don't need more than 20 booths to balance the budget. But a bigger organization might need 25, 30, 35 booths, and that's just a question for consideration. How big of an event do you want? Ames, the previous operators clearly couldn't balance their budget, and it was very crowded out there in the park with, with multiple vendors. So that's something for consideration. As far as permits, I'm a sole prop, a sole proprietor, and I'm licensed through the California Department of Food and Agriculture, regulated by Ways and Measures and the Agricultural Commissioner and Environmental Health Services. I've been in a long discussion with Stacy Carlson, who's the Agricultural Commissioner, about a certification for my, my farm stand brand. And we're, we're still going back and forth about, you know, his, his office finding a budget for certifying my markets. But recently, he pointed me in the direction of the state, that the state of California is coming up with programs for certifying farm stands for exactly this model for aggregating produce. And so that's, the legislation hasn't been created yet for a sole proprietor. As you heard before, you have to be a nonprofit to obtain a certified market permit. But the produce, what I am certified is through the state as a dealer. They deem me a dealer. And any produce or products that come through my markets that are certified organic can be resold to grocery, a grocery store or to the public and maintain that certification as they travel through my markets. There's one more point, but it just left me.
Next week.
Sure. Okay.
Can I ask, Claire, my question?
Yes, sure.
I think so, pardon. I guess I want to wrap my head. I think your model's definitely a little bit different. It doesn't sort of follow the sort of the status quo of where we kind of had a market at. With a farm stand rather than a traditional market, would there be no sort of dinner like?
No, there would. We, you know, there was all detailed in my proposal, but to clarify that, all prepared foods, artisans would all be welcomed back. The only difference is farmers would have to aggregate through the farm stand, and they would have to meet the standards of my, my operation. And the one standard that I'm most proud to present is that it's 100% organic and local. And so if, this is a very interesting time in Fairfax's community to have the opportunity to be one of the first in Marin County to have an exclusively local, organic market. And, you know, the prepared food sides, I could see in the first year, you know, we want to integrate previous vendors, we want to have them back. But my standards are to have organic prepared foods and to see 100% organic market and with zero waste, you know, tied into it. So these are, it's a worthwhile goal and challenge to meet, and it would, it would add to the family of farm stands here in the Ross Valley between San Salmo, Ross, Fairfax, San Geronimo, and Woodacre, so.
And how do you deal with, I know that one of the challenges is small, a little farm is allowed to say you support the certification process to be certified, or do you consider, is there?
Well, traditionally, I have been very, very, very strict at my markets. Everything has to be certified, organic. And then in recent years, I've seen a lot of wonderful producers bringing, you know, farming products that are, that can't afford to be certified or working towards a transition. And I welcome supporting them through that, that transition.
The other, the other fair point was, the, like, you have requested a financial guarantee that vendor dues, the fees are, you're not even kind of.
Meet, meet my mark. And that is because my, my concept is to not blow out the park with, with 35, 40 vendors to balance my budget. And it's an unknown factor whether we'll be able to, you know, as the time progresses, what vendors will be able to return this year. So due to the nature of the timeframe, and even now, another week going by, it's just, there's risk there for, for me. And I'm just looking for the town to share in that risk and in the hopes that they value 100% organic, local marketplace, the highest of their priority. That's my hope.
Is that a deal breaker? Is there, is there no?
No, no negotiations or, there's, there's no necessary deal breakers here. It's just, just goodwill. Thank you.
I, I think some of your questions have been answered, but I guess I'll go over them anyway. My approach to the festival markets or the night markets is, first of all, to make the hours as early as possible, but still include people that are working if it's a weekday market. And then, secondly, to make the primary focus a shopping experience, a fun, festive shopping experience. And it, it's absolutely necessary that this occur if you want to have the best producers and the best farmers in your market. Otherwise, they just can't come. You're a small town, and you don't have the population base to really support both things going on. But even if you were, such as downtown San Rafael, what happens over time is it, it just, the festival just starts taking over and, and people just stop shopping. They just come and they get samples and, and they have a good time. And I guess you've heard a lot of this. And, you know, I've been doing this for a long time, 30 years, and I've watched the varying types of markets. So one of the things I did was move the hours up to three to seven to get away from the nighttime kind of craziness and, but, you know, in my proposal, I mentioned that there was a UC Davis study back in the early 90s that said that there are 10 times more social contacts at a farmers' market than there are, you know, at a supermarket. And so we already have a social experience, we already have a unifying community experience. But that's not to say you can't enhance that and, and have thematic music, thematic entertainment, but also to use the, the programs, the educational programs to deepen the experience and, and to highlight the various products within the market, especially as they come into season, and to help people recognize what to do with things and what they're called and what their relationship is to other heirloom varieties and, and to, you know, focus on a more educational-oriented event, sustain, sustainable ag and, you know, green cooking and all things that Fairfax appreciates anyway. And all, all we would want to do is deepen their understanding of that and, and focus on the shopping experience. And then the other piece that I noticed at festival markets or even festival festivals, arts and crafts fairs that add a music component and an entertainment component, the same thing happens with those where they get way too off onto the entertainment. The music is sometimes too loud for the farmers or the artisans to even talk. But a lot of times, it's used as an excuse to draw crowds that aren't shopping. So then the operator can just say, well, you know, I brought you all the people, you have to, you know, you have to, it's who you bring, it's, it's who you attract, and, and it's the environment that you offer that creates that shopping experience. And one of the ways to do that is to target your advertising, target your marketing. You have to target to the, you know, KQED type, if you want to call it that, in your mailings and in, in your advertising. So these are all essentials to, to make a market viable. And it doesn't always work, but it, it works more than it doesn't. So I think that covers, and the, oh, the other aspect is, you know, we operate markets whether they make money or not. That's just our, our way of doing things. We're a nonprofit organization, we're not out for money. Money is not our primary goal in life. You know, I told you my whole life, I've been an environmentalist since I formed the first Earth Day at my high school in 1970. So, you know, that's, so we're not going to leave you if we're here, you know? We're going to stick it out, and we're going to try our damnedest. And then the, the other piece is that if, if you offer a longer season, that does help bring in a little bit more revenue for everybody, you know? So if we moved up the hours a little bit to three to seven or something like that, 3:30 to 7:30 even, you won't get into the dark as much later in the season. Or you could even leave the four to eight and then change it to three to seven for that last, say, October month, so that you can extend the sales for people. And some of the seasonal produce is still available at that time, especially Marin produce tends to come late in the season. And then I think the licensing is covered, you don't really need to know anymore about that, correct? We're a mutual benefit nonprofit, which is, and we have, I don't know, five farmers' market certificates, so I think we, we can apply there. And then the 30-minute parking idea was just great. So I'm all for that. And if, if you want to wait a week and your other, hopefully your other council member has a chance to participate, it's a good idea.
Let me ask you a few questions. See if I can remember them all. I thought that your comments the first time you were up about the advertising was interesting to me because, in a sort of glib way, I wanted to say, oh, heavens no, please don't advertise because that, that poor park is, is suffering.
I knew you'd say that.
And in fact, if you were here at the beginning, we gave an award to the guy who takes care of the park because he must be on personal basis with the grass god to be able to, well, Just to keep that thing, you know? And so I want to sort of double around to the thought of October. Many, many years ago, we brought in a turf expert. For all I remember, he, you know, worked on the 49ers field, and he talked about the fact that you could actually grow grass that would, like a football field, hold up. And we never really did that. And so this guy is. And so this guy is, is keeping it together as, as best he can. But one of the things we were told is that you should not have events in October on the grass because that's the last chance for the, the sun, the way it comes in and you plant the seed and all of the blah, blah, blah. One of the things that we thought about when we moved this market downtown was, this would be a great boon to the, um, to our merchants.
Sure.
It, I, I don't think it has. And, um, I was intrigued a little bit by the earlier hours and an outreach to the KQED folks, um, to sort of say, look, there's a reciprocal obligation here. Uh, we bring you something, granted you pay and you buy things and that's great, but it's, it's here because, um, we, the market, are part of a larger economic community. And, um, it, since it's only seven or 7:30 at night, on your way home, please stop at X, Y, Z. And, and we are an ambassador for the, um, the year-round economic vitality of this town, which really, with notable exceptions, is just hanging in there. I think it's a love of their craft rather than their, you know, really, yeah.
Exactly. They're a lot like our vendors.
Yes, they're exactly like your vendors. So my, my thoughts on that were, I was intrigued by your, your comments about advertising and I would just, you know, you, you seem to be thinking about things, you know, a little bit bigger than you. I would just ask all of you to think about the community in which you're, you're located and the stresses and strains that it's, it's facing. And also this question of October, I, I could be totally wrong, it's way over my pay grade, but it, it, from what I gathered, it might not be possible. But one of you had said, maybe we move it someplace else.
Yeah, that, I mean, the, the more visible the location, the more successful the market, you know, the more parking that helps too, the, the bigger the population or, or the fact that the West Marin people go through Fairfax, um, and, you know, they stop and maybe they'll shop in the extra shops around. But, um, yeah, I mean, if you can determine a location that works better for everyone, great, you know? I, I don't know if April makes any difference, but we could open a little sooner than, not this year, but, you know, or, or two weeks into April, two weeks into October, something like that. So that might be another way to, um, but it's not essential. I mean, it's just an idea, you know? So, um, I forget what, was there another question? All right. Thanks.
I'm last, I have lots of notes, sorry. So to address Councilmember Bragman's, um, the legal kind of standards of certified farmer's markets, um, there are only two IRS-approved nonprofits that can run a certified farmer's market in Marin. That would be AIM and Marin Organic. So I could go get, um, my mutual benefit, it's just a single-page sheet. So it's, we're all for profit, I'm pretty upfront with it, but it's, it's a single-page sheet that you file and it, it does not make you a nonprofit. So it's a very different status that those two organizations have gone through to get. What else do I have here? Uh, to address Councilmember Weinsdorf, we downtown have a program where we try to include the businesses, and this is something that would be entirely up to you, but, um, the businesses on Fourth Street are offered a spot in the market. It can be rotating, it can be weekly, it can be monthly, it's however they want. And last year, we had 17 businesses rent a spot out front. It's the cheapest fee we offer and it would be even cheaper for this market because the fees are cheaper. But it's something to consider because for us, we've had such a huge response and it's just an extra way to kind of get out there and take advantage of the people in your community and you're, you know, you're the brick and mortar, you're there. So it's been really positive for us and it's definitely, I think council's been happy with it, the businesses have been happy, it's been, we've made great partnerships with a lot of the businesses that would have maybe other night, otherwise not liked the market so much. And then lastly, to address Councilmember Hartwell, uh, I have some friends at AIM and I work with them sometimes, uh, so I did speak with them for a long time about the fiscal impact and kind of, is this worth going for, should we do this? And the bottom line I got from them is they're spending a lot of their money and time on their farm audit program, their outreach, their education, they're trying to build this pavilion, they have so many things going on. So I think for them to drop all-night markets made sense, but, you know, they kind of whispered that this is, it's doable, it's, you know, definitely something that can work and something that should work and they were so saddened to not have it. So I think that's everything that I wrote down. And then the 20 to 30 minute parking slots would be huge because I go weekly to that market and I see the people camped out all day and it's great and it's fun, but, you know, they, they have to support the, the people out there as well.
And we?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Okay, thanks.
Uh, Mark Bell, 60 through Dominga. I'm just going to run through the negatives so that you can have these in mind. Uh, on Dominga, for some reason, we hear amplified music louder than if you're standing in front of the speakers in the park. So, uh, and I know there have been complaints in the past about the volume, so, um, either the placement and/or some type of limit on the volume would be appreciated. Secondly, um, yeah, the dinner market versus the vendors, like, you know, it's kind of, you go there and you count, well, there's five people selling vegetables and there's, you know, whatever, you know, 10 people selling product. I don't think that's a good proportion, we need more farmers. Thirdly, uh, I think the fees that the other people charge were quite high because there was almost never a drop in price regardless of how the season was going. I can't believe that plums in June are going to cost the same as plums in August, for example. You know, there was one guy, he never lowered his price. You know, it's not reflective of what's going on. I remember hitchhiking through Sonoma and having, you know, being able to just buy like, you know, a pound of apricots for a buck or 50 cents and then have him give me another half pound because people wouldn't take them because they were ripe. You know, if you're actually dealing with farmers and dealing close enough to the source without, uh, you know, the middle people taking too much, in this case, I think you can get much better prices, which would increase the tendency of people to support the farmers because they wouldn't have to be giving, giving over a large percentage. I worked Renaissance Fairs for 30-something years. You could kiss goodbye the 20 or 25% of what you paid went to the Pattersons, the corporation, and the state. So, uh, I think that's a consideration to keep in mind. And, um, and while I think, uh, you know, it's good to have as much Marin produce as possible, I don't think you're getting fruit, uh, that is available, uh, in other parts of the state, even over in East Bay, like in Brentwood that grow oranges. I don't, you don't see too many people selling oranges grown in Marin. Okay, thank you.
My name is Jim Garrity and I'm a resident of San Rafael. And I'm here to support Monique and Next Generation Services to run your farmer's market for you. And I do this because of my relationship and the 15 years that I've known her and I, I sit on the advisory council for the downtown market, uh, on that advisory council as an elected official and people from the biz, from the, from the, from the business community. Uh, the farmer's market is not just about the market itself, like you were saying, it's about supporting your downtown, it's about creating a community. That's what the San Rafael downtown mark, 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 market does. There's something there for the business people to get involved with, there's stuff there for the youth to get involved with, they have, they have the music groups from the schools come down and play. It really, uh, they really attract families to come down. And you guys here, over here with your bike plans, your bike paths, your walking communities, there's ways to avoid the park, you know, the park, the parking works. So I would just say that from my experience with Monique and the work that she does over in San Rafael, that she would be a terrific fit for the town of Fairfax. Thank you very much.
Diane Hoffman, 33, Portius. Uh, right when the farmer's market ends is when the farmers have the most produce. And I remember, some of the farmers have told me, it's just so sad, they have tons of peppers, the peppers are red, tons of tomatoes, and we closed down. And I'm glad you explained to me why, uh, because when we tried to get the other group to extend it, they only extended it for two weeks till the end of September. So my thought is, you know, find another spot to extend it where you're not going to have to deal with the grass. There's a lot of concrete around that, uh, you know, so we have to move, so we change the hours a little bit or something. But it's just a shame that the farmers, when they have so much produce, they can't come to Fairfax and sell it. One of the farmers, what he does is he arranges with people he meets in someone's parking lot and you pay him $25 and he'll bring you a box of produce. So he's making the trip anyway and he's one of the better produce carriers. And one of the people up here, I thought it was really nice how she said she would like to lower the fees for, for the farmers. And I think that is a win-win situation if, if that's possible.
I gotta say, I, I can't imagine how we can't find, um, an, an extra piece of land for the late, late summer, early fall, yeah?
Valerie Hood, 79, Dominga. I'm really in favor of a year-round market, I just, I, I think what Diane said was the most important thing. After talking to the farmers and I did kind of make, I've been doing my own surveys of going to farmer's markets and they're telling me now that their transportation costs, their, the cost of the seed and the cost of whatever supplies they need are, are, are getting just unbelievable for them. And then, um, the other part is that they're not even able to hire workers that often they're, they're just bringing in their families. So instead of getting up at three or four in the morning, they're now getting up at 1:30 and two. These guys are really stressed and some of them have told me, actually many of them told me, we're not really sure how we're going to be able to do this again, you know, year after year, maybe not next year, maybe not in two years. And I know that from being a part of the Marin Grange, that we're looking at, um, less than 10% of our farmers even being small farmers anymore. It's unbelievable, agribusiness, GMO folks are just taking over our agriculture flat out. And, um, I, I think we really need to think about this in terms of just long-term survival, not just a farmer's market. I mean, I love the idea of the whole thing, but I think it's, it's the big vision that's so important about supporting these farmers in any way we can. I really like the idea of having an earlier time for the market. I think there are people that will be coming in to shop, that would be a really good idea. The problem with parking area is perfect, that's, I think, exactly what we need to talk about is, is, is doing something about the time. What I notice at the farmer's market is that, uh, people will lay down their blankets and they'll lay them down in the paths and there's nowhere to, to move. And then they treat the farmers as if they're a babysitting service and I find it so disrespectful for the farmers there because the kids are running up stealing fruit, taking all the samples, it goes on and on and the parents are, they take care of less, you know? It's, it's, it's kind of a, um, an unsocial process that I see happening down there. I, I think there's some real problems with that. I love the idea of, um, local and sustainable, but I also see that there are farmers who have, who are doing really great work with organic, uh, produce, who live farther away and they need someplace where they can also sell and make a buck. And they're having a really tough time, so I don't want to cut those guys out. I like the idea of, um, having a little rotating booth because that is a nice way, I think, for some of the local merchants to get to know the public better, really smart idea. I was thinking about St. Rita School, since that's closing down, that might be a spot where you could hold something because if we're talking about, you do have to have something about size, you do have to have something about that whole thing. If you'll give me one more second, it's, the other part that I, that I had a hard time with was the sound and the music. And I'm thinking that what I find to be more successful about the farmer's markets, the bigger ones, like at the Civic Center, is that the music and the dining are located away from where the vendors are so people can shop. It, it is, usually at farmer's markets, you're looking for a place to stop after you finish shopping, but what's, what's happening here, it's turned into a circus. And as sweet as it can be, if we're not, if those farmers aren't making any money, what's the point of having a farmer's market? I think that's about it. I think we've got some really good choices here, I think we're so lucky. I mean, it says a lot about Fairfax and maybe the economy too.
With that, we'll bring it back to council. I think the consensus here is to, uh, for Garrett to tee this up on the 14th and we'll re, yes?
One suggestion, would you be helpful with, at least from staff perspective, if council has additional questions, they just want to send to us, then we can do a trace of those questions out to the markets. They can prepare a response, we can get that back to you prior to meetings, we should have a little more information.
Sure. Sounds great. If anybody has a question, forward it on to the manager.
Can I get a show of hands, actually, one of the really nice things about AIM, the variable music stance, are you, are any of you guys, uh, have it?
We just got, we just got ready.
I plan to get approval.
I know that I don't know how well it was utilized, but I know it was certainly something that we discussed and we got it, we got approved and in our town, it's certainly been actively supportive and I know that having access to all the good food, the rest of us can sometimes afford, is nice for everybody, so, thanks.
Okay, so it's agreed that we will come back on the 14th and you'll tee this up on the agenda for that time.
Okay, telephone?
Thank you all very much.
I think we can power through the remainder of this agenda, which is numbers 10, 11, and then 22 through 25. And the backend of those, after the mid-year budget review, do not look like they're particularly time-intensive. So let's pick up number 10. Uh, approval contract amendment with California Infrastructure Consultancy, Inc. for engineering project management for town bridge work. Garrett?
So, recommendation, recommendation is authorized to town manager to execute a contract with town. Are you tuning in here? Can you speak up? I'm going to get it so long, I can just, I can't hear too well. So, authorized to town manager to execute a contract.
Hello? How about now? Okay. There we go. Sorry about that. All right, so it's, uh, we're at recommendation authorized to town manager to execute a contract. Uh, it's Jim's, sorry. How about now? Whoa, okay. All right. Authorized to town manager, uh, to execute a contract amendment with the California Infrastructure Consultancy for engineering technical services required to secure funding for two bridges under the highway bridge program and amount not to exceed $11,000. So as a little background, this is actually for two bridges that previously received funding, Metalway and Creek Roads Bridge, they're actually eligible for highway bridge funding. Uh, previously, we did get a commitment from Caltrans. What's happened is they've actually recently de-obligated the funds mainly because we haven't started the project and we didn't, we weren't able to submit any invoices for the project. So what this contract is for, it's to amend the contract to allow the firm that originally got us the funds to re-secure the funds for us for this project. And in essence, that's, um, that's the staff report.
Questions of staff, Larry?
Uh, yeah, just, on this first one, um, what, what is the contractor? So this, this is to pay a contractor to re-obligate the funds for the studies, is that?
Yeah, that's correct. And this was the contractor we used to get the funds obligated in the first place. And what happened is because the project didn't start and we didn't have any invoices to submit, they've de-obligated the funds, so now we need to go back through a process to get the funds re-obligated, which is actually different from reapplying. And so that is an option, but we're trying to get the funds re-obligated. He's actually very familiar with the process, he's very good. And so we need to amend this contract to allow the opportunity to obligate those funds, which we hope will happen within the next two, three months.
Were they, did the state obligate funds for these projects?
They did.
Okay.
They did. And so it's re-obligating the funds.
Okay, and then, actually, the contract itself is... Okay, and then, actually, the contract itself is, will be increased by $5,000.
Right. It's increasing a existing contract by $5,000.
Okay, so it's, yeah, okay. So it's not actually 11,000, it's 5,000?
It's a contract amendment, yes. Increase it from 6,000 to 11,000, so it's only 5,000. So I should have pointed that out.
Got it. And the funds were, and how much, how much funding was obligated that was de-obligated? Do you know, or?
You know, I think it was the prelim, well, I have to look at a table that I may have here, but i- in essence, it was programmed funding, so I don't know if it was construction or was more for the, some of the design component, but it was several hundred thousand dollars. And what I can do is, I can send the email to council, just giving you the amount, previous amount.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would assume it would be pre-planning funding, because we haven't even done the, the design or anything. Okay, that's it for me, thanks.
Public?
Michael McIntosh. I'm hoping that all these documents and contacts will be available, because I will be, I'm interested in trying to procure a bridge, independent, even if Fairfax doesn't want to help me, because I realize that my property is at the 500-year floodplain. And so when Fairfax will flood with the future, I can actually ask, offer a bastion or a safe place for the town.
Okay, what's your question?
Will all these documents and contacts be available to the general public, including myself?
How could they not be? Of course they are.
Well, because sometimes I have to give guys FOIA requests and they're not completely applied to them.
It's completely available.
So they will be available to me?
Yes.
Okay. And when might I be able to have them?
You could look at them tomorrow when we come back to the office, but the amendment, the contract amendment hasn't been approved, but you could see the previous contract.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not only that, isn't it online?
The previous contract? Oh, I don't.
This one?
Oh, the draft is, yes. The contract amendment itself is online, the original contract, that would be in a file in the office.
I, I think, I think what he's talking about are, what the original funds were obligated for, because he has an, he has an interest, obviously, in seeing whether, I guess, his property would qualify or something like that, I don't, you know.
Yeah, and, well.
Correct? Am I, is that?
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Right. And my under-
It's public, it's public documents.
Good. With that in mind, I'll take a, a motion.
Hold on, there's more.
Terry? I mean, Tony?
2007 Forest Terrace, Fairfax. On the issue of these bridges and stuff, what do you guys do about footpath bridges? Because the bridge that comes from Forest down to Dominga is in really bad shape, because it's, it's the, the, the base in which holds up the center of the bridge has been undermined by the creek quite a bit. And if you go walking across the bridge and jump on it, it's flexing quite a bit, it's, it's rotting away. So I'm just wondering, are we, is there funds available to deal with that, too, while we're talking about bridges?
Since we're talking about bridges, what we can do is, at some point, we could report back on available funding for these different type of bridges. I, I'm not aware for foot bridges, but, not that, we can look.
Is that called a bridge? Is that owned by the town, or is that?
It was owned by the town, last time it broke, it was fixed by the town.
That doesn't necessarily mean it was owned by the town.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, Garrett and I had a conversation about Belinas Road Bridge, so that, that is, you know, obviously, major thoroughfare. It's not on the list, and I definitely would like to follow up with that and see if we can find some funds for it, because I know that one, that one was getting scoured, too. So.
Okay. But on the one today, I'll take a motion to approve the amendment, number one, to the contract.
So moved.
Well, in favor, unanimous vote. Good. Moving on to number 11. Issuance of an RFP for Engineering/Design/Environmental Services for Bridge Projects. Garrett?
So for this item, we are also authorizing the town manager to issue an RFP for preliminary engineering, environmental clearance, and design work necessary to replace the Metalway Bridge, seismic retrofit the Creek Road Bridge, prepare a bridge preventive maintenance program for three other bridges in town. Now, as a little background, obviously, over the time, kind of Fairfax has been looking for funding for bridges. I should point out that these are all federally funded programs, so you have to meet a certain set of standards. I believe that staff had taken a look at all the bridges in town and found that these were eligible. What's going on is, again, it's two bridges, Metalway and Creek Road Bridge, and for those, previously, we had funds obligated. This passed action, we're going to try to get those funds obligated for that program. For other three bridges, they actually fall under a different program, Bridge Preventive Maintenance Program. For that, for those programs, again, I believe that funding has been preliminary obligated, but there's a process to go through, and we need to wait two, three months in order to get some federal ID number that allows us to then apply for the actual, secure the funding. But, that being said, the cost for this RFP is about $250,000, is for environmental engineering and other related design services. It's going to vary, bridge to bridge, about the level of service. But those funds that are currently in this year's budget are also the funds that are required matching funds for all these programs. And what we believe is the most appropriate thing to do is go ahead, issue the RFP, go through that process, because we're not going to be able to award the RFP until June. By that time, we should be able to secure all the funding, we should get all our federal project numbers, we should have all the funding in place, at least for the various phases. At that time, we could also report back to council on how we're seeing it all work in terms of the funding. But this allows us really to get started, get someone on board, start the process, and if anything, with Caltrans, it would also demonstrate that we're moving forward with the project, and that might actually work in our favor to get the funds re-obligated for the two bridge projects. So with that, that concludes the staff report, available for any questions.
Questions of the manager?
Okay, yes. So how, how does item 10 relate to item 11?
Item 10 relates to item 11 in terms of getting the funds obligated. Item 11 for RFP is actually starting the work on the project.
After we get the funds re-obligated through item 10.
Right. Item 11 is actually issuing the RFP so you can get a firm on board to begin design, but you actually won't begin design and award the contract until you know item 10's successful.
Right. There you go. Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Then we'll go to public. My same request that Larry very better articulated for me, I'd just like to have access for all these things and contacts, so I can try to procure these same things, so we have another bridge in our community.
Sure. Good.
Can I assume that a lot of these are for, these are for publicly held, this is funding that's going to be for a publicly held bridge, and that Michael's property will very likely not qualify, as it is not a publicly held bridge?
Well, that'd be my guess under the federal programs, but that doesn't mean he couldn't look up all those federal programs, or have a consultant look up all those federal programs and see. And actually, he should talk to Nader with the firm that we just did a contract amendment to see, he's a bridge expert, he'll know of any fundings out there for privately-owned bridges.
Did you hear that recommendation?
Oh, I did, but I've also found out that I can donate my bridge, or even the entitlements for a second bridge to different entities, which would then, in fact, qualify. Frank?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Frank Eger, a 50-plus-year resident of Metalway. And I guess we're talking about the bridge with nine lives again tonight. One of the things, there was no public, public notice given as to this, this issue on the agenda. Our neighborhood wasn't notified at all. And, and I have to ask, who, who's asking to replace our, the last wooden bridge in Fairfax? I'm not sure who, who the, the quester is here. It's, it's interesting to read the, the report, you know, the buzzwords, the scary buzz phrase like "functionally obsolete." What that means, it's a one-lane bridge. That's what makes it functionally obsolete. It's no more obsolete than this building is obsolete. So that's just, you know, how, how to get curry favor with those who want to replace the bridge. Here's another phrase, "It will likely be a one-lane crossing." I spent about 20 years on the Marin Transportation Authority before, before the new TAM. And, and I can tell you that Caltrans has certain, certain guidelines and requirements and prerequisites, and one of them, they're not going to allow you to build a one-lane bridge there. They're going to want a two-lane bridge, and they're going to want a sidewalk on it, it's going to be 30 feet wide. See, there's 232,000 budgeted for design, I guess, is that federal funding we have, I guess, mainly for, for design? So the question is, and how much will the bridge cost? And I'm estimating, I don't know, $3 to $4 million. And do we have to front that money, or is it going to be prepaid? You know, one of the problems that I see is, well, for instance, all the vegetation's going to have to be stripped on both sides of the bridge in order to, to get access into the bridge. The, because of listed species of the creek, the work's going to be pretty much restricted at certain times of the year, so they say it, it may be one or two-season project, it may be a three-season project. What it's going to do, if you put a concrete bridge in there, it's going to speed up the traffic, it's going to change the ambiance of the neighborhood, the entrance to the neighborhood. This is kind of the way the Ross Valley Senator District operated, the old manager. Projects went forward without the board knowing the total cost, and I don't think you know the total cost of this project tonight. I'd ask that it be continued for a month, and you notify the neighborhood, and you bring back more, more specific figures about what it's going to cost this community and the state and federal government to replace the Metalway Bridge. Thank you.
But this is just a request for proposal.
Does it, getting the funds re-obligated doesn't necessarily obligate us to do any work? That, that just makes it possible for us to look at doing work, is that correct?
That's correct. The, the bridge program's 100% funded on the construction side. In essence, the only cost to us is design, which is about the 11.5% match. So, but at this point, you're under no obligation to really do anything. At this point, too, I have the Metalway Bridge estimate, it's 1.6 million is the estimate for, I think that's construction and design. But, again, it's just really the first step. You have lots of different steps before you really actually start into the process, because really, we're just trying to find the firm that can do all the work at this point.
And how are the decisions made on selecting these bridges?
Well, that predates me somewhat, but I assume there was a process, because we had to go through, had to contract with many different consultants to determine what was eligible, what isn't eligible. I believe it's been in your approved budget for a few years, so I'm assuming there was a lot of different input processes as to how we came up to bridges. But that being said, I can always report back at a future meeting with a little more of the history. I just don't have that at this time.
Tony?
Oh, I wasn't clear on what the status was on the Creek Bridge. So, I mean, is that looking to be replaced, or is it going to be refurbished, or what's the story with that?
At this point, within the Highway Bridge Program, it's listed as seismic retrofit.
Okay.
That doesn't mean, you know, at this point, it's so premature, as they go through the process, that could change, that could stay the same.
Okay, that's it. And I'm really, would like to see some program put in place for the bridges that we use for footpath, because there was a bridge that went across from the park up to Pavilion that's never been put back, and I do believe that is a public right-of-way that is going from Dominga up to Forest Road, okay? And there used to be a bridge, I don't know if you ever were around to remember it, but it went from the park up to Pavilion, and it, this ca-
Is it just it?
No, this, there is a bridge right down here that went from the playground up to Pavilion, and that still hasn't been replaced. The concrete embuts are still there, so, you know, I mean, I wonder when that bridge is going to get replaced.
Tony? We actually had a item on the agenda that John Reed put on about pedestrian rightaways, so that, you know, that might be the time to, to talk about it.
Okay.
So, we didn't, we took it off because John couldn't be here tonight. So that's part of that, I think.
Yeah, I think definitely looking at the pedestrian bridges, because they're not in very good shape right now.
Neither is our budget, but that's, that's another story.
They're going to replace France Bridge, I mean.
Okay, whoa, whoa, whoa. That remains to be seen.
Okay, the hour grows late. I would like to have a motion on the issuance of the requ- excuse me.
May I ask?
Michael, one minute, you've already spoken.
I know, real short. If the town wanted to have a wood bridge to accommodate a request from one of our citizens, is that also a possibility within the program?
Michael, thank you. Can I have a motion to issue the RFP for Engineering Design Environmental Services for Bridge Projects?
I could, I would move approval of item 10, which is the item to re-obligate the funds. So I, I don't have any qualms about trying to get the funds reallocated, re-obligated, rather.
That's number 10. On 11, though?
Yes. Let's just do them one at a time.
We did. We did 10, and it was, it was approved.
All righty then.
The hour grows late, the hour grows late. Issuance of the RFP. Motion?
I'd move approval.
Second.
Unanimous. Terrific. Moving on now to our long-suffering finance director, who's been sitting here for, for many, many hours. Michael, talk to us about the mid-year budget review. Hey, guys, take it outside, it's, it's noisy in the room. Excuse me. Frank?
I'm sorry.
Please, please take the conversation outside.
So this item is one of the great joys of a finance director, to be able to present, you know, the, the results of six-month analysis of the activity of the finances of the city and, as compared to what the budget is. In the past, we have often presented this in conjunction with actual budget amendments. Because of some of the items that are included in this, the depth that we need to really go into it, specifically the CIP element of it, I'm not proposing that we do any budget amendments with this action today. I've, I've actually separated that out, and we'll come back perhaps next meeting, not necessarily next week, but the next meeting with any specific recommendations of, of budget amendments. So basically, what I've done with the staff report here today is to break it out into a couple of different elements. One, one would be the revenues. In analyzing the revenues, we, we've found that our property taxes are coming in pretty much as expected. We figured that we might come up a little bit, a little bit better, a little bit to the better of, on the regular property taxes, which is the bulk of our budgeted revenues. In addition, we got good news this, in the, in the past few months, that the, the county has acquiesced to our request to reduce administrative, the property tax administration charge. At this point, we're looking that we'll, we'll receive back or a, have a reduced charge of about $20,000 for this year. And this, this may end up being more, depending on what kind of negotiations go on with the city, from the negotiations that are going on from other cities. So we asked originally for 90, 90 or $100,000, and they've come up with 20 so far, so somewhere in the middle, there's going to be a, additional monies that we're going to save on administrative charges. In addition, in analyzing our EREF distribution, I calculated that we're going to get about 10,000 more than we budgeted. So on the property tax side, we're looking, we're looking like we're going to be coming in about 32,000 ahead. In the area of sales tax, I looked at this, we're, we're slightly ahead as far as the base budget that we had for sales tax. I calculated at, at December, we had received about 52% of our budget. The municipal finance group has reported that we're receiving about 14% over what we received last year. And we, we budgeted that we would, we would receive somewhat better, but this is, this is better than what we had expected. So I'm expecting that just on the base sales tax, that we'll probably come in 18,000 ahead. As of this point, we've received about 80% of what our Measure D budget was. When Measure D came in to effect last April, we started receiving our money right around June. We really didn't have any kind of baseline to be able to say what our revenues might be. And we budgeted $200,000 that we would receive, based on a, on a, on a, sort of a conservative estimate, by projections from municipal finance. At this point, we're ahead of where that's at, and we could, if we were to draw a line and say that this is going to continue through to June, we might receive another 120,000 above what we had budgeted. I don't want you to take that to the bank, okay? Really, honestly. A lot of this kind of revenue is generated from sales that are outside the city. Somebody could buy a freightliner in town here and, and generate enough sales tax to spike this. We don't have a long track record of what the revenues are to be able to say off of six months of revenue, that we're going to double what we got already. So, I've asked the folks over at Muni Finance to look at this, and we're gonna, we're gonna fine-tune the projections of where we're coming in. But the good news is, we're coming in better than what we had expected. So, sales tax, I'm very happy with, to be able to say that we're doing okay on that. The numbers that we projected for VLF swap were slightly down below what we wanted to get, but the triple flip is actually coming in better than what we thought. So, overall, I'd say that the revenues are coming in better than budget. On the other side of the coin, our expenditures, as of December 31st, 2012, are at 49.6% of what we budgeted. So, for the general fund. There's a few departments that are over. I would expect this to happen, as an example, with our fire department. We front, we front-end pay our capital expenditures portion of what their budget is all about, so that's going to be above budget to begin with. At this point, I don't expect that there's gonna be any, you know, significant requests for additions to the bottom line. I did have a request from the police that I'll be presenting with the, with the budget for a few capital items that are of minor significance, which we'll probably ask for a budget amendment for. As far as personnel goes, our personnel budget's coming in pretty much as, as expected, a little bit below that, with some differences. So, overtime budget is way below what we thought it would be. It's only half of, or a quarter of what we had budgeted as of December. Overall, with the, with the changes that, that are happening in the administrative side of things, we're gonna have some salary savings likely in that area, and we might, we might come out by June with saving about 80,000 in salary expenses. The big area that I, that I wanna really go in and look at is our capital improvement expenditures. We, on some of our projects, like the Pastore Outfall Pipe, we had about 48,000 in expenses, which I don't think we'll get reimbursed for. And we'll need to backfill those kinds of things from the general fund, most likely. There are some, I'll call it audits, of the expenditures that we had for the storm from Calima, which we're going through right now, and, you know, fulfilling the requests for backup for these things. I know that FEMA has been going in and denying other nearby cities monies that they had requested. If we don't get the monies that we expected that we were gonna get, again, we will need to backfill expenses that we did there with general fund monies. I don't have a number for you tonight. These things are in process, and we'll, we'll get something to you as soon as we can. The revenues that we're having for gas tax, I didn't put that into the report, but right now, we're looking that we had about 48% of the revenue received at this point, so those are pretty much on track. Those are the major items that are in the budget. I'm more than happy to address any specific questions that you might have.
So, really, I'd just like to thank Michael for his work on this. He's pretty much a one-man shop, so I know this takes a lot of his time to do. Bottom line, though, looks like this projection is saying 200, roughly 280,000, about 4% of your general fund. That might be a little aggressive, but I'd say you're looking at, you know, 150,000 to 200,000 in savings this year in your general fund, which is a pretty big number.
Do you think that, let's just assume that that number holds hard, that we can expect something like that year over year? Because as we've discussed, we contracted our staff, and now, in our conversations, we're beginning to talk about expanding our staff, whether it's a public works director or something like this. All in play at the moment. But because we have really, over time, and as long as I've lived here, always budgeted so conservatively, if we were able to recognize that kind of a savings while keeping other parts of our budget hard, we could begin to really look at the importance of bringing in more staff and relieving the, you know, they're working way too many gigs, you know, per job. So, I mean, something has got to give. And when we see the economy improving a little bit, naturally, it's the, I think, the inclinations of the electeds to say, how can we treat the staff with the dignity and respect that they deserve?
Maybe I'll start. This isn't working anyway. Pretty much, I would say, it's really hard to say. I mean, obviously, you're having, you had some salary savings because you had transition between town managers. You'll save some, obviously, the town clerk is retiring, but we hired a new deputy. Just lots of moving parts, you know, you have increasing health costs, you also have some contracts coming up. So, it's really difficult to say. I would say that you're gonna have some savings. Some of that is a permanent saving ongoing, but then you're probably gonna have to use it to cover, because, you know, health costs are gonna go up, so, you know, and retirement costs. And so, it's difficult to say. But I would agree that this year's budget will try to put together a five-year plan so you can kinda have a, see where we think it's gonna be under different projections, and then we can have a better plan for how to build reserves for specific projects. That'd be the thought, anyway.
I'd like to add to that, that, you know, Garrett's coming in with, with some really sound budgeting advice, and working with him on the, on the concept of doing five-year projections, I'm really excited about that part of it. As far as the, what I see happening in our revenues, they, you know, I opened up the budget projection by saying that in property taxes, you know, some of the recent articles are talking about housing prices in the Bay Area, you know, starting to recover, you know, 14% increase just over last year in housing prices and that sort of thing. And what we'll see from that is, as properties start to turn, we'll see, we'll see a benefit from that, but also, those properties that were written down, that have seen a lot of decreases, we'll see that start to come back up to where it was before, you know, without having sales involved with that. So, I think the long-term projection for property taxes, I think, is pretty good at this point, based on what we're seeing just recently. As to whether it's gonna stay that way, I can't, I can't project that. But somewhere along the way, we might be able to get, you know, some good sources of projections for those numbers. Sales tax, I, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that that's gonna, that's gonna, you know, hold its own. So, those are our biggest revenue sources, so I think that that could, could lead to, you know, something that's stable down the way that you might see in future years, too.
I would-
I have a couple of questions. You know, it was about a year or two ago that we raided our reserves. And, you know, if we end up creating or generating a surplus, I'd like to see us put some money back in reserves, because I think our reserves now are maybe 670,000, somewhere in that vicinity, and it's, they've actually gone down in the last few years. So, I wouldn't be spending the money before we get it, number one. Number two, we're gonna be renegotiating all of our bargaining groups come June. So, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, we may generate some liquidity, but we're kind of operating in the whole right now. If you look at it over like the last three or four years, where our reserves have actually gone down. And that's a concern to me because, you know, we're, we're always somewhat precarious if we have an emergency. That's where we go. So, I don't really want us just to kind of ignore that issue as far as our long-term financial planning is concerned.
We did, we did put into this year's budget a planned payback of the amounts that we borrowed in the previous year. I think 40 or 60,000 dollars payback per year over a five-year period to pay back what we had borrowed in 2011's budget, I think it was. The other thing is that, one of the things that some people don't realize is that, one of the reasons why the general fund reserve is lower is because one of the things we did was, you know, make whole some of the funds, the side funds, the other funds other than the general fund, which were negative, which we didn't, we don't want to be carrying as a negative balance. So, the reserves looked artificially high because you had negatives in some of the other funds, which we're working to, you know, bring to zero, because ultimately, those are usually the obligation of the general fund to, to make whole if they don't, if they go negative.
Right, but if that means our reserves are actually less than what we originally thought, it just, it kind of reiterates my concern that we, we kind of take responsibility for them and not forget them.
Right.
So, I mean, I do appreciate you actually balancing our books in that regard, but, you know, I don't, I just, I just, I want us to have enough of a cushion that we just don't take what could be temporary liquidity for granted, especially given negotiations coming up and all that kinda stuff, so. Anyway, it's a great report, and the clarity of the report's great. Sales tax thing sounds really promising. So, I mean, to me, that's a pretty good indicator where we're at.
So, can I get a motion to accept- The 2012-13 mid-year budget review.
So, second.
Unanimous. Okay. All right. Number 23, the issue that I had the opportunity to converse with Garrett on and actually discussed at council back a month or so ago. The discussion consideration of a local preference policy for professional services supplies and materials in public works projects using informal bid process. Garrett?
So, pretty much with this, we're looking for some direction on what the council preference is, you know, developing some preference policies, coming with a purchasing ordinance and so on. Maybe as some background, pretty much, the town, we don't have any ordinances or policies governing purchasing. As a matter of practice, I think we do go out and look at local vendors, local suppliers, and contractors when we can. On the public works side, we're limited to no more than $15,000. Anything over 15,000 under the ordinance, we'd have to go with the lowest responsible bidder. On the professional services side, really go for the most qualifications and experience. If there happens to be someone local, you know, we would ask them. If not, then we really need to go outside the area. Again, vendors and supplies, it just depends. One thing, we did a quick check of other cities. Most cities has something, not most, but several cities have something that says, they'll give a 1% if you generate sales tax, local vendor. If their price was in 1% of anyone else, since you get that sales tax, you would go with the local vendor. We did take a look, and for other communities, they would do from anywhere to 5 to 10% local vendor, preference. So, if a vendor's price was 10% more, and they're a local, they would go for that. That only applied for non-construction projects, non-professional services. So, they, and they limited to thresholds, like anything, something over $5,000, say you're buying a bunch of office furniture, then they might let them do a 10% preference. So, under contract, public law, or public bidding, and Jim could add to this, is, you know, you can't have that 5 or 10% unless you're a charter city. Here, if we wanted to, we have the flexibility to change the 15 to 45,000, but you'd have to amend the ordinance. But again, I don't know for the cities, from what we could tell, there's no rule of thumb of what percentage it should be. Really, as a matter of practice, it was something we sort of eyeballed, but that's not a very good policy, so we would need to come up with something. The 1% sales tax, pretty straightforward. Other than that, it's really, we just need some direction on how you'd like us to proceed.
So, am I getting to where I'm just sort of at, where there's kind of an either-or of purchasing ordinance or a sort of local preference policy, right?
Right, and I explained the purchasing ordinance. Typically, in cities, you have a lot more guidance over what staff can or can't do, and what the thresholds are. Here, you have it for public works projects. You have the threshold of 15,000, town manager, 45 in formal bid, anything over 15 goes to the council for approval. For public, for professional services, or buying supplies, or anything you need a contract, it's not very clear. We take everything to the council. I don't know how effective that is, especially when you only meet once a month. Sometimes we have that in-between period where we need to do something, and so it's not very clear. Some things, we just do a purchase order, some things we pay by invoice. Really, in other cities, you'd have something that guides you to what requires a purchase appeal, or requires a contract. And it just provides a lot more clarity to staff, to the community, and to council what's allowed. So, that's something that would be more formalized, be much more structured, and would say something like, maybe the town manager's authorized entering the professional services contract, I'll use a number, up to $15,000, and that doesn't require council approval. Anything else would. And so, it's just something that provides a lot more clarity to everyone involved, could make things more effective and efficient in terms that, you know, we know we don't have to come back to the council. Although, as a matter of policy, in our financial reports every month, we report our expenditures, so you would see everything. We could add contracts into that, too, if that was something. But again, it's really up to the council. We keep it the way it is, just come up with some policies, just to guide staff when it comes to local, or actually go out and do a purchasing ordinance, and obviously, that would come back to you for review and approval.
I like the idea of the local purchasing preference. I don't think it should, I don't think we should be currying favor with local merchants at the expense of the general taxpayer base that we're supposed to be representing and have a fiduciary duty to. But I think a policy, you know, that, you know, maybe it would be the $15,000 threshold, maybe, maybe less, where we do give local merchants a preference would be something that would be prudent and helpful. But again, you know, I do think we need to balance, really, the overall financial needs of the town as an operation and the pocketbooks of the taxpayers. So, you know, I just think we need to balance those two things, but I think, you know, giving that, crafting a local preference policy, resolution, ordinance, any, any one of those vehicles, I'd be interested in pursuing.
Garrett?
Might I suggest, from your experience and also conversation with other town and city managers that you're getting to know, why don't you come back to us with something you think that is consistent with, you know, what you and I have discussed, what Council Member Ragman is talking about? And let's see where we go from there.
You know, the other, the other thing, the other issue is on small contracts and giving local contractors preference, and that's something else. It's the same balancing act, but I mean, we're dealing with it right now with the ballpark, where we've got a small project, it should be done by a local contractor, we actually had a local person. You know, if we had a policy that really, you know, built that in, I think the town would be better off on some of these small projects, I really do, because we would probably build up a pool of qualified contractors.
So, take the, the example, let's use our favorite Pastore thing. We had a very good, and they did a terrific job, a company from Cotati, but there was a local guy who would've done it for a couple of grand more. It seemed to me that, that contract, which was in the $20,000 ranges, that might've been a nice opportunity to keep the money local. Local guy, local company, local resident, spent the money locally. So, if you wanna look back on the request for proposals on that particular project, that might give you an idea. It's above the 15,000 clearly, but you could see the difference between the applicants.
Anyway, you know, so I think there's those two sides. There's purchasing side, small contract side. State contract code, it's 45,000 isn't the limit, I think, is state contracting code. The $15,000 limit was put into place because we wanted assurance on what was being spent. I'm not really interested in changing that right now, but it's certainly not written in stone that we couldn't increase that incrementally to, to the 20,000, like on past story. You know, so we could really encourage, be sort of an economic stimulus for, for local contractors and, and local merchants.
So, you have direction? I don't think that it's appropriate to, to say, come back by X, but when you have the chance to do your work on this-
Put it on your list.
Put it on the list. I would say, you know, April might be too soon for you, but May should probably be.
Okay.
All right, moving on very quickly.
Or maybe June, after we look at our budget, that might even be a better idea.
I would, I would recommend on 24- I would, I would recommend on 24, which is a council committee, by the way, we're not going out to the public for public comment on that, because nobody's left in the room. Number 24, we have a council committee assignment with Ryan's departure. My feeling on this very quickly is, I, there are three things here. The Ross Valley Fire Board liaises on to the Youth Commission and the Tree Committee member to replace the former council member. We may need a, an interim alternate member to the Ross Valley Fire Board, depending on when John gets back. And I spoke with the chief this evening, and there, there are important matters. So I would ask Larry if you would be available next Wednesday evening to attend if John is not back from the East Coast.
What's the date?
The 13th.
I'm arriving back in town on a flight at 7:00.
Okay, then I'll, 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 yeah, I'll, I'll do it, yeah.
Obviously, we'll tell you if you're not needed.
Hopefully, John will-
Hopefully, John will be back. As for the other two-
I'm already doing the Tree Committee thing.
You're taking over for him?
Because I was his alternate, so I'm just doing it.
All right, well, we're gonna have a new council member, maybe we put it on that person when they arrive. As for the Youth Commission, rather than assigning it, I'd, I'd be interested in everybody's thoughts about a future agendized item, in which we discuss the Youth Commission, and whether this should get folded into the extraordinary work that Camille and her team at Focus are doing, and maybe this is an opportunity to flow some of that money. I recall, they, they stood up and asked for additional funding, this might be an opportunity to incorporate this Youth Commission into Camille's good efforts, and direct that money toward her efforts as well. Something to think about.
Sure, something.
Something to think about.
Okay.
And finally, number 25, I know this one's gonna really be a tough one, I hope everybody's put an hour aside for this one. A resolution of the Town Council authorizing temporary closure of streets for the Little League opening day parade on Saturday.
Second.
All in favor, I see a unanimous.
It would've been on consent, but Judy didn't let her renumber everything.
Not a problem.
That was the third time, she's been killed.
Well, with that in mind, motion to adjourn? To the 14th.
Second.
Good, unanimous. Okay, thank you all.